Okay, we are live.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is June 16th, 2021. My name is Rob Cagnetta, and this is the meeting of the South Kingston Rhode Island zoning board review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, William Mark, no, not William Mark, I'm sorry, Bill Rosen, Casey Charcwick, and Susan Walsh. Also present are Jamie Gorman, the South Kingston Building Zoning and Building Official, Gina D'Enzo, who is the South Kingston Special Legal Counsel, and Jessica Spence, the Administrative Support Associate. The board is made up of seven people, where five of them are regular voting members, and five members are required to be present for the vote. In the event one of the five members is not present, an alternate will step in, like the case of tonight. And tonight, we're only going to have five, but that's enough to have a vote or have a quorum. Tonight's the voting members are myself, Thomas Daniels, Bill Rosen, Casey Charcwick, and Susan Walsh. Applicants are here either for a variance, dimensional, or use, or to seek a special use permit. The board is a quasi judicial body created by South Kingston ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get carried away, or it is determined not to be relevant. So in the interest of time, please try to be on point and be brief. We do our best not to argue, and we keep things civil. We try to have our last petition heard by 10:00 P. M. When your petition is called, please make yourself known. Jessica will find you amongst the crowd out there, and we'll also give you instructions as to how to be found. You will then be asked to state and spell your name and take an oath to tell the truth, and then you'll be asked to present your petition along with any other witnesses that will testify in your support. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. After the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone else with questions about the application or wanting to support or oppose the petition will then be asked to step forward. They will identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony, which may be followed up by questions by the board. Please do not ask direct questions to the petitioner or any other witnesses. The board will allow the petitioner to answer questions raised by the audience or respond to comments after the comment period. After hearing all the testimony and before a vote is taken, the members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. And so you're aware, variances or special use permits require four of the five voting members to vote in favor of the petition for granting of the requested relief. Board members will ask a lot of questions, and there is a good reason. We cannot grant anything just as we choose. There are rules to follow per our South Kingston zoning ordinance. You must give testimony to support certain facts that allow your request to be approved. Tonight, we have dimensional variances and special use permits on the agenda. For variances, you must offer the board evidence, setting forth the following: That one is your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or the structure, and is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. The hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part. The granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The relief requested is the least relief necessary, and you must also show that the hardship will be suffered if the variance is not granted, it will amount more to more than a mere inconvenience. And for special use permits, you must present the following: That you are requesting this special use is authorized by your ordinance. Somewhere in the zoning ordinance, this has to be authorized, or we don't have the power to grant it. The special use permit meets all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance authorized for such special use, and the granting of the special use will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. And since we are on Zoom, if Jessica, you could be so kind as to explain some of the ways to engage with folks on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. So first thing, I am going to ask that all applicants leave their cameras off and their video muted until your petition is called. At that point, I'll ask you to turn on your camera and your video. So once the applicant's testimony has been given, at that point, anyone who is in attendance can raise their hand to speak in regards to the petition. The raise hand function is on your computer, on the top right, there should be a little function that says raise hand. If you are calling in by phone, star nine will raise your hand, and star six will mute and unmute you. The Zoom platform, it brings the first raised hand to the top of the order, so you will be called in the order in which the hands are raised. Couple of things to keep in mind, the agenda and all of the supporting documents are available to view online at southkingstonri.com under current zoning applications. The last thing is the question and answer function that many of you may see. It's only to be used if you're having technical issues. We will not answer any questions specific to any of the petitions in that forum. So with that said, I think we're good to go.
Excellent. Thank you, Jessica. And tonight, we have six petitions, and Mr. D'Enzo, I believe that we can combine the first two of the same property with the special use and the dimensional of the same property. It's okay for us to combine those two?
Yes, that's correct. They can make one presentation, and then as long as you approach them for voting purposes separately as two separate petitions, then you can hear them together.
Okay, so I can read them both in, and then before we take a vote, we'll do a separate.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll read in the first two, the petition of Green Hill BTS LLC, care of Heidi Kenny, 966 Lakeview Trail of McQueeney, Texas, 78123, for a special use permit extension under the zoning ordinance as follows. Request for an additional one-year extension of expiration date for the special use permit granted on January 21st, 2015, for a property owned by Conrad Heffernan and John Drew, 130 Rosebrier Ave, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for a special use permit to construct an onsite wastewater treatment system closer to a wetland than permitted. 150 feet is required, 75.4 feet is requested. Premises is located at Green Hill Beach Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors map 90-4, lot 174, section 504 and 907 are applying. Request made pursuant to section 908B of the zoning ordinance. Applicant requests an extension of the expiration date from July 1st, 2021 to July 1st, 2022. And then the second is the petition of the same Green Hill BTS LLC, care of Heidi Kenny, 966 Lakeview Trail, McQueeney, Texas, 78123, for a dimensional variance extension under the zoning ordinance as follows. Request for an additional one-year extension of the expiration date for the dimensional variance granted March 16th, 2016, for the property owned by Conrad Heffernan and John Drew, 130 Rosebrier Ave, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for a dimensional variance to construct a 24-foot by 24-foot dwelling closer to a front line than permitted in an R80 zone. 40 feet is required, 35.7 feet is requested. The premises is located in Green Hill Beach Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, assessors map 90-4, lot 174, section 207 and 907. Request made pursuant to section 908B of the zoning ordinance, applicant requests an extension of the expiration date from July 1st, 2021 to July 1st, 2022. And okay. So for our documents. Okay, so for the 915 of, well, they're both the same. The first one is a letter from Green Hill BTS LLC dated in March 5th, May 5th, 2021, just two pages. Transfer of interest later, letter dated March 2nd, 2021, Rhode Island, DEM OWTS Construction Permit dated December 28th, 2020. The correspondences by James and Terry Bedard, 939 Green Hill Beach Road, dated June 10th, 2021. An email from Jeff Willis, CRM C to Heidi Kenny dated June 14th, 2021. And then there are the previously recorded zoning board decisions. The one granted June 17th, 2020, and recorded June 30th, 2020, book 1747, page 537. Granted May 15th, 2019, and recorded May 23rd, 2019, book 1705, page 634, and then there's a granted January 21st, 2015, and recorded February 15th, 2015, book 1567, page 598, 599. And then the 200 radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notaried affidavit, notarized affidavit of mailing. And then for the special use, I'm sorry, the dimensional variance extension, we do have their letter from Green Hill BTS LLC dated May 5th, 2021, which is two pages, transfer a letter of interest dated March 2nd, 2021. Same, or Rhode Island, DEM OWTS Construction Permit dated September 28th, 2020, correspondence is the same, James and Terry Bedard, and the email between Jeff Willis, CRM C to Heidi Kenny, both June 10th and June 14th, respectively, and then the previous decisions. The one granted June 17th, 2020, same, and recorded June 30th, 2020, book 1747 and page 538. Then the second granted May 15th, 2019, and recorded May 23rd, 2019, book 1705, page 602. Granted July 18th, 2018, and recorded July 23rd, 2018, book 1680 and page 619. Granted March 6th, 2016, March 16th, 2016, and recorded March 23rd, 2016, book 1603 and page 114. And then the 200 radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And those are all the documents. And who is here tonight for this petition?
I am Heidi Kenny, H E I D I K E N N Y.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth?
I do. And for the record, I am a fifth-generation Rhode Islander, and I do keep a home with my sister in Providence.
Excellent. Okay, so it's okay. We didn't judge you.
Mr. Chairman and board members, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to plead my case. My name is Heidi Kenny. I'd like to give you some background information so you'll have a clear understanding of why I'm here today, requesting the extension for both the special use permit and the variance on lot 174, plat 90-4, 915, Green Hill Beach Road. I purchased this lot on August 5th, 2020, from John Drew and the widow of Conrad Hefferman, Joanne Hefferman. The listing agent was Peter McLaughlin. I was told by Peter that Mr. Drew was an elderly gentleman in failing health, and that Mr. Hefferman had passed away after the property was listed. His widow, Joanne Hefferman, is also elderly and apparently has diminished mental health. It was my understanding from the realtor that this lot had all the approvals in place and was ready to build on. I had received over 80 pages of documents on the history of this lot, which I carefully read. I had copies of all the rulings from the town of South Kingston, granting the extension for the special use permit and the variance through July 1st, 2021. The Coastal Resource Management Council ascent letter provided to me from the sellers via the Realtor detailed all of the restrictions for this lot to construct a single-family dwelling. This document did not have any expiration date on it. Once I closed on the property, I immediately began working with a local builder and an architect. In addition, I continued to work with Eric Prevee, the civil engineer from Dupree Engineering, who had previously worked with the sellers. Eric told me about new technology for septic system, a hydrokinetic system. He designed the system for the property. We applied to DEM for approval, and it was granted September 28th of last year. I believe you all have seen that copy of that permit. My architect, Adam Vannacore, had a preliminary meeting in the fall with Jamie Gordon, the town zoning and building official, to ensure that we were in compliance. It was in November, the second week of November, that we applied for building permits. It was at this time that we discovered that the coastal permit had expired in October 2019, almost 10 months prior to me even purchasing the property. A conversation with my attorney indicated that I probably had legal recourse to the sellers, but as I mentioned earlier, the sellers are both elderly and in poor health and/or poor mental health. So I opted a different course of action and decided to work with my civil engineer to request an extension from coastal. On my behalf, Eric Prevee from Dupree Engineering contacted Coastal to discuss an extension. He was told that an extension can only be granted if the ascent had not expired, and as a result, we would have to reapply and start the process all over again. The application was resubmitted to Coastal on December 22nd of last year. It was moving along all the various areas within Coastal with no issues. On or about March 8th, the draft of the ascent, the new ascent document, the declaration of the restrictions, was sent to their outside attorney, Anthony De Sesto, where it has been sitting now for over three months. Both Eric and I continue to contact the coastal biologist in charge of the application, but to no avail. She cannot complete her work until the documents come back from their attorney. I would have appeared in person over at the coastal offices in Wakefield, except for the fact that due to the pandemic, they are closed. On June 1st of this year, I sent an email to Jeff Willis, the executive director of Coastal, asking that he intervene on my behalf to find out why people, applications are sitting there for three months. Mr. Willis and I finally spoke on Monday, June 7th. He told me that he had their counsel working on other major coastal projects, which was why documents such as mine were sitting at the attorney's office unread. Mr. Willis told me he had personally spoken to their attorney and requested that the documents get reviewed and returned back to Coastal. The following day, the 8th of June, Tuesday, the biologist overseeing the application, Tracy Sylvia, emailed me to say she had a call from the attorney to review the application, and we were finally on his radar. As of this past Monday, still no updates from Coastal, so I sent another email to Jeff Willis, and you saw his conversation or correspondence back to me stating he'll follow up with another phone call to the attorney's office. I still have not heard back, so today I put another follow-up phone call into Mr. Willis, resulting in no answer at Coastal, so apparently no one is even answering the phones there today. Mr. Chairman, I had planned to be moving into my beach house this month, but instead, I'm here before you requesting extensions for both the variance and the special use permit. In addition, this past year, I have spent thousands of dollars on legal fees, environmental engineering, and coastal fees, not to mention paying taxes on the property. The town values at $521,000, and without you all granting my extensions and the coastal permit, it's a non-buildable lot. So I hope I have outlined the unusual circumstances necessitating me being here today for these requests. Thank you for your time, and I respectfully ask that you will approve both extensions.
Okay, and before I ask you, I just want to make sure with Ms. D'Enzo, so we don't have to worry about how many times this has been extended, or the fact that it hasn't expired, or did it expire?
It has not expired.
Has not expired. Okay, so so the quantity of extensions is entirely up to us, I would assume.
Yes, it's up to you, and I do think that it's relevant that it has not expired and that there is an end point, so that this is not something that goes on indefinitely, but it continues to come before the board, and certainly to the petitioner. I don't I don't have any expectation that this would go on indefinitely, but for the purpose of its management, you know, finite periods of time and coming before the board before the expiration of the current permit, I think is relevant and helpful.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Kenny, you didn't change anything with the design? Everything is the same? Okay, all right. Board members, any questions for Ms. Kenny?
Is the wastewater treatment system the same as it was approved in 2014?
No, sir. It is probably a better system than what had been approved. The system that's going to be used now is a hydrokinetic system, so it's a very high-tech system.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, this seems open and shut to me, so.
How did the other board members feel in terms of Mr. Daniels? Any concerns at all?
My only comment is I think Ms. Kenny has ridden this merry-go-round for long enough, and I certainly have no problem in moving to grant the petition.
Thank you.
So, yep, go for it.
Therefore, I'll do so unless there's any other comments from.
We'll just make sure. Is there anyone out there, Jessica, that would, that opposes or has any comments relative to this petition?
Again, you would need to please just raise your hand if you have any comment. No one has raised their hand.
Excellent. Mr. Daniels?
I move the extension of the petition of Green Hill BTS, care of Heidi Kenny, Kenny, for a property located at 130 Rosebrier Avenue. The application and the documentation accompanying this petition was read into the record previously by the chairman. We are moving to extend the expiration date from July 1, 2021, to July 1, 2022, in accordance with section 908B of the South Kingston zoning ordinance. The original special use permit was granted on January 21st, 2015, and with that, I move the extension.
Excellent. Mr. Rosen, second. Any other discussion? Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Charcwick?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I. Motion passes?
Thank you.
And now?
I move the extension of petition of Green Hill BTS, care of Heidi Kenny, for a property located at 130 Rosebrier Avenue for an extension of the dimensional variance granted on March 16th, 2016. The request is made pursuant to section 908B, and the documentation and the accompanying petition has been read into the record clearly by the chairman. The extension is for a date from July 1st, 2021, to July 1st, 2022, and I move the extension.
Before I second it, Mr. Daniels, I think that the property is actually located at 915 Green Hill Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
So in your first motion and this motion, I think we ought to amend both of them to say that.
We could do that with this one, and I think the last will.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I got confused on this because in the in the statement of the petition, it says 150 Rosebrier, and it doesn't say the date and the address of Green Hill.
Apparently, that's the owner of property's address and not the actual fiscal address. So why don't we amend both motions to indicate assessors map 90-4, lot 174 on both of those to clear those extensions up, Mr. Rosen. Is that all right?
And I'll second that.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Charcwick?
Hi.
Ms. Kenny? I mean, Ms. Kenny, sorry.
Don't give away my vote.
The screen moved.
Hi.
All right, Mr. Cagnetta, I. Motion passes.
Thank you all, and good evening. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the petition of Henry and Constance DiMarco, 679 Jerry Brown Farm Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a 23-foot by 23-foot single-story detached garage. This property is located within the Jerry Brown Farm Association property. The parcel of land that this property is located is in a non-conforming due to the number of residential structures on the same parcel. The special use permit is required for any addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification of non-conforming use. Lot size is 70 acres. Although there are no property lines between dwellings, the distance from the proposed garage to the closest adjacent dwelling is 68 feet. Special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section 203. Special use permit for addition and large, or intensification. And section 907 are standards of relief. The owner of the land is Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc., and the owner of the dwelling is Henry A. and Constance L. DiMarco for premises located 679 Jerry Brown Farm Road, South Kingston, assessors map 821, lot 1-22, and is owned R80. And for this, we have the application that's signed and dated May 6, 2021, the owner's authorization signed and notarized May 5, 2021. Site plan is one page, plan elevations and sections, which is a one, prepared by Laura Kukourian, excuse me, AIA, and dated May 8, 2021. Google Earth screenshots, two pages, proposed ISDS plan, one page, prepared by Carrigan Engineering, and dated August 5, 2003, with revisions, May 5, 2021. 2,000-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And who is here tonight for this petition?
This is Henry DiMarco. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great.
Could you please tell your name?
My name is D I, capital M A R C O. I'm here tonight with my wife Connie, and we swear to tell the truth, and everything in here is truthful.
Okay, and are you going to be the only one speaking, or are you going to have?
Yes, I believe so. Laura Kukourian might be on also if our question comes up, but otherwise, I'll be the only one speaking.
Excellent. So go ahead. Tell us what you'd like to do.
So we would like to erect a 23-by-23 single-story garage within the Jerry Brown Farm community. We've been to the site committee within Jerry Brown Farm and all of the neighbors. That's the process here, so that we have the concurrence and the approval of everybody within Jerry Brown Farm. And we would like to put a small garage up, which requires a special use permit on this property. And I'm not sure what else I could add to that. I put, you know, some pictures of what it's, where it's going to be. It's like really at the end of Jerry Brown Farm, near the cul-de-sac, and all my neighbors are happy with it, and it won't affect anybody's views, and hopefully it'll add to the value of Jerry Brown Farm community.
Okay. Board members, any questions for Mr. DiMarco?
Just one, Tom Daniels. Mr. DiMarco, this is a single story and just crawl space above kind of thing?
Actually, I'm sure it'll be a crawl space above because I'm trying to keep the roof line low, so it doesn't affect anybody's views, but it is going to be a single family.
But it is going to be a single-family um. Twenty-three by twenty-three foot garage next to the house.
Single story, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I have one question only as well. Is there a driveway from Jerry Brown Farm Road to the garage?
Actually, you're currently on the property today. I have a driveway, and it is going to sit on the existing driveway of my dwelling. So there's no no additional road cuts that'll be made. I have a driveway that I park on today that's uncovered. I'm just going to put the garage in the same spot, um so it'll be covered.
So you're going to put the garage where you park your car presently?
Correct, cor- exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah.
I had a I had a quick question just for clarification. It lists three structures on the application. Is one of those like a shed or?
No, at well, so I wasn't, you know, this is a little different because there's twenty-two structures within Jerry Brown Farm.
Right.
So I just picked the closest three structures within Jerry Brown Farm, my neighbors.
Oh.
You know, Mark Healy's house, the Smith Frost house, and the McWilliams house, they're the closest houses, and I just measured the distance.
Your butters. So you really only have one building?
Yes, correct.
Your your property right now on the property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members' questions? Okay. Um, so in here, it's 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 less relevant. In terms of size or design, uh so I don't I don't necessarily believe we need to hear from uh Ms. Krikorian. Okay, is there uh any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Jessica, is there anyone out there that that might have a question?
Again, please use the raise hand feature if you wish to speak. No one has.
Okay. Mr. DeMarco, anything to add or?
No.
Nope. How does everyone feel about this uh in the board? Is there any concerns or is it pretty straightforward?
Pretty straightforward to me.
No issue.
Someone like to make a motion then?
I guess I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Just a second. That's my grandson coming down the steps to say good night. Uh, motion to approve the petition of. Where is it?
Henry DeMarco.
Henry and Constance DeMarco. Of, let me get my glasses on here just a second. Uh, six seventy-nine Jerry Brown Farm Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. For a special use permit under the zoning ordinance. Two oh three. And uh standards of relief nine oh seven. Uh, the applicant is seeking to build a standalone garage, uh twenty-three by twenty-three. Uh on his property, the property is part of Jerry Brown Farm. Community. Um, and Henry DeMarco was the only one that spoke at tonight's meeting. With that, uh and having said that the chairman read the petition into the record. So I don't have to repeat that along with the documents that are uh assigned to this petition. I will say that the board finds that the special use permit is specifically authorized by this ordinance. Because it fits in with the uh Jerry Brown Farm. And the uh and the approval has been given by the uh community, essentially a Jerry Brown Farm. Board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in the subsection of this ordinance authorizing such special use. Uh since it's not going to add anything, the garage will go in exactly the same place. There won't be any. Disturbance of the roads within the area, and uh it certainly fits within. Uh the general character of Jerry Brown Farm. And the board finds that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent. Or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. Um, and as a result, I move the uh the petition uh for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Uh, can I get a second?
Okay.
Is that Mr. Daniels or?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, uh any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Charcawick?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right. Have a great evening.
You too.
You too.
So next we have the petition of Rob and Samantha. Oh, boy. Schlat Schladdel. Boy, okay, uh four thirty-three Martin Road, Heveron, Connecticut, zero six two four eight. For a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to replace the existing seasonal cottage and deck. The cottage will be increased by size of by a hundred and fifty square feet, the maximum allowed. The new cottage is proposed to be five hundred and thirty-four square feet, and the deck will be two hundred square feet. The repaired separation, the required separation between adjacent cottages will be. In compliance uh with the zoning standards, lot size is fifty point two acres. This special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance section two zero three special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification. Uh section six oh eight, which is our coastal community overlay district, and section nine oh seven, which is our standards of relief. Owners of Cottage six W two is Robert and Samantha Stedle. On property owned by Vintuic Beach Properties located at two forty Cards Point Road, South Kingston. Assessors map ninety ninety-two dash one lot nine dash two ninety and is owned R two hundred. Uh, and for this, we have an application signed and dated May fifth two thousand twenty-one. Owner authorization signed and notarized May second two thousand twenty-one, existing plot plan, proposed plot plan. Elevation and floor plan, which are four pages. You have a two-hundred-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And who is here tonight to correct my terrible pronunciation?
Good evening. I'm Samantha Schattle. You did a great job trying.
I was getting called Shadow?
Yeah.
Shadow, okay, excellent.
I've heard much worse.
Well, tonight is a good night. Um, so Rob and Samantha, you guys will both be uh talking a bit?
Yeah, I'll start off and and then um if there's anything to add, uh my husband Rob will chime in as well.
So please uh just spell your names for us.
Yep, uh first and last?
Yes, please.
Samantha S A M A N T H A, last name Schattle, S C H A D T L E.
Robert, R O B E R T, Schattle, S C H A D T L E.
And you both swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. So go ahead, tell us what you guys like to do.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and board members for hearing this. Um, I'll just start off by saying I know we are Connecticut residents, but we have been visiting the Rhode Island shoreline my whole life since I was a child and my husband as well, and. It's kind of time for us to put some roots down. Um, it's such a lovely place, so thank you for hearing our proposal. We are requesting a special use permit um in order to. Remove an existing cottage, which we purchased this past winter. Um, it is in desperate and critical need of a lot of drastic repairs, and we are under the impression that. Removing the structure and rebuilding a structure is going to be in our best interest, um rather than trying to go in through some drastic repairs. Our proposal is to remove the existing cottage. We are located at six W two in Roy Carpenter's owned by Matunik Beach Properties. In its entirety and build a new structure in its place in accordance with all the zoning codes. And in accordance with section six oh four, I'm sorry, six oh eight dot four, we are proposing to add the one hundred and fifty square feet, which be. Because that is the lesser of the amount than the fifty percent um of the existing cottage there, so we are requesting to. Extend towards the back um of the home, the existing structure there right now. The new GLFA will be a size of five hundred and thirty-four square feet, and right now it is three hundred and eighty-four square feet. The proposed structure will maintain the distance from neighboring structures on the east and west sides of six W two. There is a road on the north side and a road on the south side, and distance from the road on the south side will be maintained and actually possibly increased. And distance from the proposed structure on the north side will be um maintained or slightly decreased um possibly as well. Oh, I'm so sorry. I I read that backwards. The north side is the back, so right now there is a current deck on the back of the house that is going to become structure. Um, so it will still maintain the distance from the road to any structure. It's just going to be cottage instead of deck. But the grassy area that is back there will remain what it is, if not be increased. Um, on the north side facing the water, that is going to be maintained. Nothing will be closer to the road on that side. The parking um area will be increased due to the this change as well um on the backside. The proposed structure that we have is going to be set on peers. And raised to the required new building zones and code. The existing structure was built in nineteen forty. Um, so we are definitely out of code for quite a few things, and we will be whatever it's this new structure we bring in will be. Up to building code with what is required as well as flood code. The proposed structure will have a deck on the east side of the house, which currently there is a deck on the current cottage in that same exact location, so that is not. It will be a new deck, obviously with new materials, but the location of that deck is not going to be changed at all. The height of the proposed structure will be no greater than seventeen feet measured from the freeboard elevation in accordance with all of the zoning ordinances. In the coastal community that you have. And stairs for entry are going to be located on the north or the south side. We still haven't um been able to determine that because we want to be extremely respectful of the neighboring cottages on both sides of us to ensure that whichever side the stairs come down. We're not encroaching or making um, you know, a disrespectful decision in order to have our traffic flow. Water utilities would ideally be stored underneath the structure if enough room allows and the um and the floodplain. But alternate plans would put that outdoor storage on the side of the structure um enclosed, which is um fine as well. The septic, the proposed, there was not a septic, but the proposal is to have a composting system, which is allowed in there. Um, and that is actually gravity-fed, so we are requesting that that tank go underneath just because of the nature of that um that piece. Our drawings are not finalized drawings. We will be having architectural drawings um drawn up. But we were um led to believe that we didn't need to have those. They weren't required for this meeting, so we wanted to give our. They are generalized plan, basic ideas. We're not deviating from anything. And then we will move forward with any recommendations you might have or requests that you might have to make sure that our architectural drawings are really complete when we do apply for the building permit.
Great, okay. Um, so uh my my first question actually will be for uh Mr. Gorman. Will it matter for us to determine where the stairs are going to be? In this in this meeting, do we have to say?
Uh, it's uh, I think there's two options on the plan indicated. But stairs are would be exempt in section six oh eight, so it's not counted in the floor area for increase. So if maybe if there's two options presented. It could be contingent on one of those two options.
Okay, and that's good enough for you? Okay. Sounds great. Um, and and that's that's true, uh Sam and Rob, that that you guys wanted to have it. On those one of the two locations, either on the north or south side on the deck.
Yeah, there's really no other place to put it. Um, you know, with the way that things are setting up, set up, and we're trying to make sure that we maintain and be respectful of the neighboring cottages. And maintain that distance that we're required to have.
And um I just want to make note of one uh. Measurement on the drawings between the proposed and existing. Um, on the existing drawing on the east side, it says that it's fifteen point ten feet. And then on the proposed, um on the east side, it says five point four feet. So is that is the first one of the existing? Is that fifteen point ten from the structure?
Yes, yeah, that fifteen ten is actually from the existing structure to the neighboring cottage.
So then it would be about seven foot ten or so would be the balance. Um, from the deck to the other structure? Is that right?
Yes.
So.
The there is a small, if you see on the existing structure, there is a small bump out.
Okay, so that's another three feet. So you would be a sent, it's essentially four foot ten inches away from the existing building.
We're we're going to eliminate the bump out.
No, but I'm I'm just saying the existing is about four foot ten inches away.
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
And the proposed is going to be an additional six inches farther.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have so far. Uh, board members, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I I do, Tom Daniels, again for uh for the building official, um. My understanding is some minimum requirement. Between structures, either twelve or fifteen feet, I don't recall without looking at the ordinance. And tell me how this uh fits into that restriction.
Yeah, so vice chair, the if it's a replacement, it has to maintain or increase the fire separation. Um, if it's under fifteen uh feet in dimension, so in this case, um it looks like it may be. We have fifteen foot four inches on proposed. And. Fifteen foot ten on existing, so they may, I mean, they're about six inches over. Based on that.
Okay, I guess my concern is on that five foot four inch side. What what is existing on that?
So fifteen foot ten is existing. That's from cottage wall to cottage wall.
Okay.
So provided it's over fifteen feet, that discrepancy would not come into play, but if it's under fifteen feet. It's required to maintain or increase. The fire separation, but that would be all the wall from the cottages, not the deck to the.
The deck is not, deck is not uh not counted?
Uh, the the language in the ordinance for six oh eight is from cottage to cottage, so. As to the deck being considered part of the cottage. Um, typically in the past, it was from the wall of the cottage rather than the deck.
Okay, because I realize that that uh separation uh was amended and discussed based on fire safety. Uh, standards.
Yeah, I can.
So on the west side, the twelve-six, what what's existing, Jamie, on? With the western structure?
So currently, according to the site plan, we have fifteen foot ten from cottage to cottage. That's on the east side.
Twelve-six on a proposed, I see.
So on the west side, twelve-six, that that's remaining the same, so because it's under fifteen feet, they have to remain the same or it or make it more conservative, less.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other board members' questions?
Yeah, the uh the deck on the east side.
Yes.
Is that going to be raised to?
Yes.
Okay. So my understanding, Jamie, is that the deck. Doesn't obstruct a fire truck coming in there. Is that correct?
I I don't think fifteen feet is going to allow a fire truck to come in there. If it was, but that's, yeah, I think the roadway, they'd have to be parked on the roadway.
So they have roadway on both sides, so that's not a problem really, I guess. Okay, one other question. Is it the south side or the north side that is being uh decreased?
The north.
From the from the present footprint.
So if I can just clarify, um the existing. Card that's on file with the town um is what I have. um is what I have here. That's what we gave to you. However, the deck is actually on the backside of the house physically, the structure. So there is deck on the north side right now, um but the card that we utilized has it on the south side. Um, so we we gave, you know, the information that the card has. So right now the deck is on the back of the house, the north side, which will be just turned into cottage rather than deck. That makes sense.
Okay. That's the south side, right?
The north side.
I I'm sorry, the north side. But the south side, the what's on the south side? There's.
Just cottage.
Just the cottage and i- is the uh footprint from from the roadway to, I'm sorry. If from the roadway to the cottage itself, is that distance decreasing on the south side?
No, it's increasing.
It's increasing.
Yes, sir.
And the north side is staying the same.
Correct.
From from the road to the co- to the new cottage, the proposed cottage.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other board members' questions for the applicants? Okay, um Jessica, is there anyone out there that wishes to speak in behalf of this petition?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay. Robin Smith, do you guys have anything to add or?
No, I I think we're good.
But that's all right. You don't need to. Uh, it's not a trick question. Okay, so board members, uh, any other questions, uh thoughts, motions?
I I just have one thought. Um. I I drove down there. I didn't go into the property, but I look from Cards Pond Road towards the ocean and I see all these structures up on stilts. And personally, the view is not very good. I'm wondering, is there any way to uh, I I realize that they they have to do that because of the flooding and all that type of stuff. I understand the problems associated with it, but um driving down that road, it just uh doesn't look like South Kingstown to me. It looks like something out of uh Oakland, California, where I've been, where there's these structures that are standing up on stilts and all kinds of things. Almost like dinosaurs wa- while wandering around. Um, is there any way to cover that up?
Not without it looking like you're covering it up.
Yeah, possibly. Yeah, I was afraid of that. Anyway, no, I don't have any problem with this. They're they're in a tough situation down there and I understand what they what they have to do, so I'm not gonna vote against this.
Don't wanna make a motion, though.
Um, well, I didn't actually go down there and and look at it, so I really, I if somebody else would like to make the motion.
I'll I'll move it, Bill.
Okay.
Uh, move the uh special use or uh to approve the special use permit of uh Robin Samantha Shaddle uh of Hebron, Connecticut for property located in uh Matunik um on Matunik Cards Pond Road, and that's Matunik Beach Properties. The property is owned by Matunik Beach Property and based on the uh section six oh eight, the coastal community overlay district. A special use permit is uh required and is authorized. Um, the petition and the appropriate documentation has been uh placed on file and was read into the record by the chairman. Uh, Mr. And Mrs. Uh Shaddle both spoke on behalf of the applicant. Uh, and spoken naturally in support of their request. There was no opposition to this request. And uh the board finds that the special use permit is specifically authorized by this ordinance. Once again, because section six oh eight and section nine oh seven, the standards of relief both authorize the special use permit. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in a subsection of this ordinance authorizing such special use. Because after some discussion regarding the separation between cottages, it's been determined that the uh there is adequate uh spacing between the cottages because it's not being reduced from from the old uh structure to the new structure. And in addition, the board finds that there is a roadway on both sides of this particular structure. So any concerns about emergency vehicle or uh firefighting vehicles uh are ameliorated by the roadway on both sides of the proposed new structure. The uh board finds that the granting of this special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area as uh uh Mr. Rosen so uh so noted, uh it's gonna be consistent with what exists uh in the area currently. And uh the uh intent or purpose of this ordinance or comprehensive community of plant uh plan of the town uh will certainly not be impaired. This is a uh a coastal uh uh cottage community, if you will, and this uh uh improvement to this particular uh structure in this particular location will certainly add to the uh uh the improved character of the uh of the area. Uh, there are no issues with ingress and egress to the lot. Uh, there is no uh issues with traffic flow, pedestrian safety. Uh, we have discussed the access uh uh in in case of fire or emergency. Uh, and again, roadways on both sides of the structure will uh accomplish uh any need for emergency services. There is no off-street parking or loading uh areas uh uh need to be addressed. Uh, there is nothing to uh applicable with trash and storage and delivery areas. Utilities uh will be self-contained within the new structure. There is no screening or buffering required. There's no signage. Uh, there's no open open space or required yardage based on this special use permit. And this is uh certainly in general compat- uh compatibility with lots in this coastal community area and within Matunik Beach properties. And with that, uh there are no conditions to this approval and with that, I uh move a passage of these bad approval of the special use permit.
Excuse me, can I just jump in here? I I I may have misheard, but I believe that the the space between the properties was not required to be maintained or reduced. But it is in fact reduced by six inches. Is that correct? And and I thought I thought you said it wasn't reduced, but I just wanted to be clear for the record that it wasn't required to be reduced. Um, and I also thought the building official suggested that this motion be contingent on the plan uh including either of the two stairway plans.
Correct.
I I I beg to differ. I didn't hear it that way. I didn't hear the uh building official say anything about this, the uh contingent on the stairway. I think he was okay with where it's located. Well, we might have misheard him.
We just, we said that we can have either or, north or south uh a location of the stairs.
If if I may, Chairman?
Yep.
Just to clarify, if because it's over fifteen feet between cottages, the fire separation doesn't apply. It can be decreased, in which it is on the east side, but it's remaining over fifteen feet.
Okay.
So it's in conformance, sorry. With that, no change to my motion.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, um, hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Was there a second?
Oh, wait, sorry.
Need a second.
We get next, please. Mister.
I'll take it.
Second, okay. And uh so, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mister Charcolick?
Hi.
Mister Rosen?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Mister Cagnetta, I. Motion passes. Good luck.
Much. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. I just wanna say, Mr. Gorman, I just wanna thank you publicly. You've been so incredibly helpful in your advice advisement throughout this process to get us here. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Way to go, Jamie.
So, uh, okay, next we have the petition of Philip uh Corton of ninety-five Billington Avenue, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven nine. For a dimensional variance, one of the zoning ordinances follows. The applicant is seeking to demolish the existing dwelling and storage shed and construct a new dwelling and detached garage. The dwelling will be located eight point four feet from the property line and the detached garage will be located eighteen point two feet from the front property line. The required front yard setback is twenty-five feet. Relief of sixteen point six feet for the dwelling and six point eight feet for the garage is requested. The detached garage will also be located three feet from the left side property line. The required yards, side yard setback is ten feet, so a relief of seven feet is requested. Lot size is twenty-five point two thousand square feet. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section two zero seven, non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements. Section two zero eight, non-conforming lots of record. Uh, accessory building setback requirements, section five zero three point one, accessory structures and nine zero seven old standards of relief. Owner of the property is Philip P. P. Corton and uh premises located at ninety-five Billington Avenue, South Kingstown, zero two eight seven nine. Assessor's map sixty-nine dash two, lot twenty-eight, and is zoned R forty. Um, and for this application, we have their cover letter and narrative signed May seventh, twenty twenty-one. Owner authorization signed and notarized May sixth, twenty twenty-one. Vision appraisal, field card, map sixty-nine dash two, lot twenty-eight, three pages. Correspondence from attorney Kenyon dated June first, twenty twenty-one. Exhibits, we have a application exhibit, soil erosion runoff and sediment plan, which are two pages. Prepared and stamped by Jeffrey K. Bolsh, Bolsh of uh PLS of Frisilla Bolsh and Associates and Carolyn uh Jay Doyle, P E, dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. We have a twen- two hundred foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings and notarized affidavit of mailing. And who's here tonight for this petition?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Philip Corton. Uh, the applicant owns the property at ninety-five Billington Avenue. It's twenty-five thousand three hundred and forty-seven square feet in size. It's in an R forty zoning district. There's an existing three-bedroom, single-family residence and shed on the property. We're here tonight on a request to demolish the existing house and shed and construct a new three-bedroom, single-family residence in approximately the same area as the existing home. Uh, the existing house previously encroached on Billington Avenue and the shed was on a separate lot across the street. Uh, in two thousand and twelve, we started the process of merging the two previous lots and a portion of Billington Avenue to create one larger lot, and that was completed in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, we had uh an administrative subdivision was approved and uh that subdivision also required a special use permit from this board. Uh, once that was completed, uh you have the lot that's before you now. Uh, after completing the merger, the app- applicant was before you in April of two thousand and fourteen for a special use permit. I mean, I'm sorry, for a uh application for similar dimensional relief as he's here for tonight, and that included a sixteen-foot buff uh front yard variance and a half-foot rear yard variance for the house. As well as uh setback variances for the proposed garage. Um, as you know, uh, after receiving the zoning relief, the applicant then proceeds to CRMC for an ascent. Uh, the applicant did that and the process took uh much longer than anticipated. Uh, and in reviewing the matters, CRMC requested some changes to the plan that re- that required the applicant come back here and request uh additional relief. Uh, so the proposed house has been uh reduced in size from what was originally approved. It's also been moved forward on the lot and it's now located eight point four feet from the front yard line. And now requires a variance of sixteen point six feet instead of the sixteen feet that this board previously granted. Um, the proposed house now meets the thirty-foot rear yard setback, so no rear yard variance is necessary under the new plan. Uh, the applicant's also proposing to demolish the existing shed and construct a new garage on the northeast corner of the property where the existing shed is located. Um, and that uh also requires dimensional relief. A- as you can see from the site plan, the the property is located at the end of a road and it's uh kind of on a peninsula. It's surrounded by um on three sides by salt pond and the marsh. Um, the house and the garage have been sighted. The proposal is to provide as much uh buffer to those wetlands as possible. And the garage has also been sighted in that location to take advantage of the existing driveway in that area. Um, tonight, the applicant's here along with uh Jeff Bolch, who's the project surveyor, and I'd like to have uh Jeff sworn in, please.
Hey, Mr. Bolch, could you please uh spell your names? Yes, my name is Jeff Bolch, J E, J E F F, B A L C H.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. Go ahead, Mr. Kenyon.
And Jeff, can you uh explain to the board where you're um employed?
Yes, I'm self-employed at Frisella Bolch and Associates, right in Peaceville.
And what are your duties there?
I'm the principal uh surveyor and the owner of the firm.
And are you familiar with the applicant's property located at ninety-five Billington Avenue?
I am.
Are you familiar with the surrounding properties?
Yes, I am.
And is that area made up of mostly residential uses?
That's correct.
And could you uh describe the existing conditions of the uh applicant's property to the board?
Yes, in the in the northeast corner, there's a, there's a small existing shed. Um, towards the center part portion of the lot, there's an existing home. Just east of the ho- of the home is an existing denitrification system that was installed um several years ago, maybe almost twenty years ago. And um there's a, it's within a flood zone. Um, there is uh, the street is immediately to the north of the property and to the sort to the west of the property. And it's um uh just an odd-shaped uh piece of land that fronts on uh Point Judith Pond and uh a wetland to the east.
And did the applicant previously completed subdivision increase in the size of his property?
Yes, he did.
And did the owner merge the two lots uh along with a portion of Billington Avenue?
That's correct.
And did that increase the size of his property?
Yes, it did.
And prior to completing that subdivision, was the existing house actually over the front property line into Billington Avenue?
It was.
And now is the existing house within the front yard setback?
Yes, the existing house is within the setback.
And are there wetlands located near the applicant's property?
Yes, and partially on the property as well.
Could you describe to the board where they're located?
Yes, uh, it's probably by visual, it looks like approximately twenty-five percent of the lot is uh of of saltwater marsh to the southeast of the property. Um, and uh it's, yeah, southeast of the property.
And is the uh property at the end of a peninsula basically surrounded by the marsh and then water on the other sides?
That's correct.
And a- as you stated, the property is in a flood zone?
That's correct.
And does the existing house meet the flood zone requirements?
No, it doesn't. The the lower level is with well within the flood zone and even the first floor of the existing house below the flood elevation.
And is the applicant proposing to demolish uh the existing house and construct a new one?
That's correct.
And will the new house be serviced by public water and the existing OWTS?
That's correct.
And uh how did you come up with the proposed location for the uh house?
Well, we try, we need to maintain um a maximum distance if if possible from the coastal feature. And the coastal feature is a blue dotted line that's shown on our site plan. It goes around near the wetland and near the the Point Judith Pond. So we're trying to maximize those distances. Um, we can't meet those distances, so we're trying to get as far as we can. Um, we can't go any further southeast because of the existing sewage system. Um, and uh we're we're pinned in essentially with a small lot and the coastal feature and this OWTS.
And were you? And were you attempting to maintain as much of a setback as possible from the wetlands?
Yes, we were.
And uh. In order to meet the flood zone requirements, will the house be raised up?
Yes, it will.
And does the applicant have to have all his mechanicals above the flood elevation?
He will.
And is that part of the reason why uh he's looking to uh somewhat increase the size of the house?
That is that and the fact that he's losing the garages that are uh in the basement. He's losing the basement.
And uh now is the applicant here tonight requesting a front yard variance?
Yes, he is.
And is the variance necessary in order to maintain as much of a setback as possible uh from the the wetlands and the coastal feature?
And the OWTS as well, yes.
Now, moving to the garage, is the applicant requesting the front and side yard variances for the garage?
Yes, he is.
And how did they come up with the proposed location for the garage?
Well, we essentially put the proposed garage in the location where the existing shed is located. And and also there's an existing driveway and stone walls. Um, that are coming in off of um Billington Avenue. And we placed the garage in that location, so we didn't have to rebuild all the walls.
And does by placing the garage, does it also limit the amount of disturbance necessary by just using the existing uh driveway?
It does.
Um, now, how big is the proposed garage?
Um, the proposed garage. Is uh. Let's see. Three hundred and sixty square feet, eighteen by twenty.
And uh, i- is it possible to make it much smaller and still be usable?
Not really. Um, a garage, it's to be a garage, that's a pretty small garage that's being proposed and it's fairly reasonable. And if it was any smaller, you wouldn't be able to do much for a garage.
And now is the proposed garage located next to a lot that contains the garage for the house across the street?
Yeah, the lot immediately to the north is a residential lot that only contains a garage. There's no home on that lot to the north.
And uh, I know we've had a few applications before this board on on this uh on Billington. Um, but Jeff, are the lots on Billington are, do a few of them. Are they made up of one lot that's on the water side of the street and then a garage on the uh other side?
Yeah, the lots uh as you go down Billington Avenue, as you're going south on Billington Avenue, the residential lots would be on the west side. And the garage lots would be on the east side.
And i- in your opinion, will the proposed uh garage in that location have any negative impacts on that adjacent property?
No, it's in a, it's a similar use as the lot next door.
And does the proposed site plan provide adequate parking for the proposed house?
It does.
And did you prepare the drainage plan that was submitted with the application?
Uh, I I myself did not. I contracted with CJ Doyle um PE uh to do the actual drainage design. But the drainage is shown on our site plan.
Thank you. I I have no further questions. If the board has any questions of Jeff?
Thank you, John. Um, board members, any questions for Mr. Ballch?
Um.
Uh, Mr. Daniels.
Tom Daniels. Um, Mr. Kenyon, you you have some other witnesses to present or?
I, the owner is here tonight. He was going to.
All right, then I'll ask, I'll ask Mr. Ball. Uh, i- if he can answer. Uh, Billington Avenue is. Um, very tight. Obviously.
Correct.
Uh, one of the concerns that I have is demolition vehicles. Construction vehicles. And uh access to that property during this, during the demolition and during the rebuilding. Especially. With concern to emergency vehicles. How are you possibly going to manage that with the with the size of the avenue, no turnarounds? If you can answer it.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm not the builder, so I I'll give you my best, my best guess. Um. Based on the site plan, um directly opposite the proposed garage, just off of our sheet. Is the next house. So there is some length of of existing road. That is south of the next house, next budding house. So it's not like, wouldn't be blocking their driveway. It wouldn't be blocking access to their property. Um, there's also parking within the lot. Um, both uh near the where the proposed garage is, and there's also parking on the south side. Um, of the, that green island that's in the middle of the uh proportion of the lot. So that's all driveway that's down there as well. It's already existing. And realistically, they're not going to, there's, I'm showing a little fill in the front of the house. And that fill probably won't happen until they're all done. So all that existing driveway is still available for parking.
My personal opinion, having viewed the uh the site. And familiarity with the road, I don't see how. You're going to keep vehicles off the roads. During demolition, during reconstruction. Or in the event of an emergency, I I can envision it, but that's me.
Yeah, I I mean, I can't answer to see how the builder's going to address that.
Okay, um. Any other board members' questions? For the engineer? No? Okay, Mr. Kenyon, anyone else?
Yes, I was gonna have uh the owner, Philip Cornton, be sworn in.
Okay. Mr. Cornton, please uh spell, spell your name for us, please?
Yes, P H I L L I P. Last name, C O U R T E N.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So, Mr. Kenyon, please.
Sure. So uh, Phil, are you the owner of the property at ninety-five Billington Avenue?
Yes.
And how long have you owned the property?
Oh, twenty years, this uh June, past June.
And are you proposing to demolish the existing house and construct a new house and garage?
Yes.
And can you explain to the board why you're proposing to construct a new dwelling rather than try to add on to the existing?
Uh, the existing structure was built nineteen forty-four. And um was way outside of anything that would resemble code today. Um, and um, uh, I have actually had builders come in and had an architect or Korean. Um, draw up the possibility of doing some additions, but given the existing structure and the flaws in the existing structure. Um, builders are not prepared to add anything on or or touch the existing structure the way it is. So um, that was the biggest challenge. Um, in addition, uh, you know, the distant structure doesn't meet uh code in terms of floods, so you'd have to raise the whole building up. And um, the building's got a lot of problems. It's an old building. Um, so um, we did explore that option and felt it was very impractical and and nor could we find any builders. Who are actually willing to add on to the structure.
And um, when you said that it doesn't meet code, are you talking about both the flood code and the the building code?
Yeah, well, the I I and I can't speak fluently about either code to tell you the truth, but I know that, as Jeff said earlier. Um, you've got the first floor that's not even high enough for the existing flood code. And then on the interior, um, you've got some very low ceilings, things that I don't believe building code would allow today. Um, not to mention, um, you know, other building flaws like um, you know, slanted floors and 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 other things. It was built by a single man by hand back, you know, seventy, eighty years ago.
Thank you. Now, were you trying to attempt to minimize the size of the house and still make it functional for your use?
Yeah, I mean, we we worked very hard um uh with both Jeff and with the architect work Korean to keep it as close as possible to the same footprint.
And uh, in two thousand fourteen, uh, did you come before this board and receive a uh dimensional variances for similar type of construction?
Yes.
And uh. After CRM C's review, are you proposing to move the house? Uh, slightly away from the water and towards the front yard?
Yes, we're trying to comply with CRM's uh uh requests and requirements to be as far away from the wetlands as possible.
And does that require, I I believe the additional relief is about half a foot. Um, from what was originally proposed or approved?
That's correct.
Now, regarding uh Mr. Daniel's question about the the construction vehicles, you've been there for twenty-one years. Have there been uh several houses along that road that have been reconstructed?
Uh, yes, um, there have been. Two houses along the road that were fully renovated. Um, uh, so and uh. They managed, uh, and they have a lot less space than I do. And uh, in fact, um, I being at the end of the road, um, uh, construction trucks, I I do believe they'd fit. Um, next to my house and they wouldn't be blocking anybody on the way because I'm at the very end of the road. But in fact, the other two houses that were renovated um were midway down the road, had the potential to cause more problems.
And that, that's what I wanted to clarify. You are the last house on the road, so construction vehicles wouldn't be blocking anybody else's access except to your property.
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you. I I have no further questions if the board has any.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Cornton?
I I have one question. It it looks like there's an area. Um. Sort of adjacent to the house and slightly in front of the house. That's, it looks like a gravel patch. Is that? Is that like a parking area?
Yeah, a- as of today, um, there's a gravel area that is. Um, at the end of Billington Avenue and front of the house, that is currently a parking area. Um, that's an area that that floods and and Jeff Ballch had come up with a drainage plan and a great plan to to correct that problem.
And i- is that a a place where vehicles could possibly turn around and, you know, a staging area, please?
Yeah, absolutely. And um, I mean, if worse came to worse, we could create a turnaround if we needed to, but that would require. You know, some demolition of a uh. You know, wall and and it would probably cause more disruption than than having the vehicles turn around, but it could be done.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other board members' questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Mr. Court- Cornton, is that correct?
That's correct. You got it.
Mr. Cornton, I, I, you've joined two lots together to make one. Uh, back in uh twenty fourteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, how big is the lot now?
I believe it's on the plan. John, you had the number twenty-two thousand?
It's it's twenty-five, a little over twenty-five thousand square feet, so. Uh, Mr. Rosen, the the two lots were where the proposed garage is. Th- there was a small lot and then there was the portion of Billington Avenue that used to exist. So basically. Uh. Kind of uh. If you take out that rectangle where the garage is located, that's kind of what the lot looked like before. Yeah, uh, so at present, it's about a half acre, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Um. And it was stated that the wetlands that are on the property is about one quarter of the lot size? I believe Mr. Ballch testified, uh, you can correct me, Jeff, that the um. The marsh area uh took up about, uh, was it one-third of the lot?
I I just visually estimated, looking at the plan, that was approximately one quarter. I mean, it could be twenty percent. I I don't know. I just, it was visually looked like about a quarter.
Okay, as you come down Billington Road, I I went down there and 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 actually talked to Mr. Gordon. And he was very kind to show me around a little bit. Um. But I didn't get a good feel of where the uh marshland is. Is is it to the right of the house or to the left? As you come down Billington?
It it's to the left.
To the left, okay. So that's beyond the uh, the uh OWTS, right?
That's correct.
It, that's where the OWTS is in the backyard, essentially.
Right, the marsh is located to the um east of where the OWTS is on the other side from the house.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not very good at directions, but to the east and to the left, okay. Um. I I I also had some concerns that that Mr. Daniels had as to a parking. Uh, I think it's during demolition that the that the biggest problem is going to take place and, of course, the building of the house. Uh, let me ask another question. Um. Is the present uh foundation of the house remaining?
No.
No, that's going to be taken out and a new foundation is going to be put in.
Correct.
Okay, so essentially you're demolishing the entire thing and clearing the lot. Except that you're putting the house back on essentially the footprint. Of where the house is so that it doesn't impinge upon the OWTS, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um. I think that's all the questions I have right at the moment. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Uh, regarding follow-up to Mr. Rosen's question. Uh, Port Foundation or describe the uh, we we don't have a builder here, so. Maybe these questions are more appropriate for the builder, but.
Yeah, it hasn't been determined yet. I mean, uh, so I I can't, unfortunately, I cannot answer that question. Uh, we'll go based on the best recommendations of the builders.
Okay. Um. So, um. I guess, I guess my my only question, I guess, uh, to to our attorney, Gina. Uh, when it comes to. If there are any concerns during construction, it's not as if. We're able to create. Barriers or guidelines as to. How something is going to be built. It's just a matter of where it's going to be built. Really for us, right?
Uh, yeah, any restrictions that you would want to put would have to. Relate specifically to the granting of. The the petition.
Right.
Um. Anything outside of that really isn't something that you can make a condition of your approval.
And and.
With that answer question.
Well, I mean, does, does, let's say, I mean, it's not necessarily an egress issue if during construction. Per se, is it? I mean, is it, is that a consideration?
Are you asking me? Are you asking?
I'm asking you, like, I'm just asking you just as a general sort of parameter as to what what it is we're. Responsible for looking at, let's say. I mean, if there, let's say there are concerns. It it is it something in your opinion that could even be brought up? By the board to say, hey, we're just concerned that somebody's going to be building here. Uh, uh, there's going to be activity of building. And then that activity is done when it, once it's built and then, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Is is it? Within our jurisdiction to be concerned about that even?
I- in my opinion, if it's something that's only going to be happening during the actual construction phase, then it's outside the scope of what you are hearing and approving. Or not approving tonight.
Okay. Okay. Um. Yeah, because I'm I'm just more concerned about, it it seems like that it's somewhat of a, it's not necessarily gray area, but um. I'm not even sure where that enforcement comes in. When it comes to safety, community, I guess it's more of a policing situation than it is if there's streets being blocked and so forth.
Yeah, and I think that that there is the the appropriate enforcement authority that would either be a fire or police. Issue if it was a blocked roadway or if there was. The inability for trucks to get in for emergency purposes. I think that would fall on the department at issue. To make whatever restrictions. Were necessary to make sure that that happened, yeah.
Okay, so for our purposes, then we we don't really. We can consider it, but it's not necessarily something that that can.
That it wouldn't be part of your decision.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Kenyon.
Uh, on another application on this same street, that issue did come up and um. If I remember correctly, I I believe the town solicitor had said that uh. That you couldn't make it a condition, but I believe we ended up doing that anyways and that. The the condition, the the concern on that was blocking Billington Avenue because it was midway down. And they were worried about construction vehicles being parked there. Um. Uh, certainly, uh, we don't have a problem with the condition that there won't be any blocking Billington Avenue. uh, certainly, uh, we don't have a problem with the condition that there won't be any blocking Billington Avenue since we're at the end. Um, but if you wanted belts and suspenders just to make sure they're not lined up down the road, then that's fine.
Yeah, I just don't know how enforceable it is and I, and that's why I wanted to make sure, you know, just based on the, the advice of council is to what we can even do in a situation like this, uh, because we can't really mandate good behavior, uh, which is always a challenge.
Fortunately, this is a unique neighborhood, um, in that, uh, the, the homeowners there, a lot of them have lived there a long time. Uh, and they all, uh, get along and, uh, socialize a lot during the summer. I know because my, my sister's rented the house next door and, uh, uh, I've had a, a beer or two with Phil, um, and the other neighbors. Uh, so it, it is kind of a unique neighborhood in that they all, uh, really do get along well.
Well, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to see if there's anyone here that has an issue, uh, but that, that's good to hear. Um, okay. Uh, board members, any other, uh, questions, uh, for Mr. Corden?
Well, I don't have a question, but I'm, I'm remembering back about two meetings ago. Didn't we put, uh, some restrictions on a property?
On that street? Yes.
Not on this street, but it was some other street where we said that, uh, during building, uh, they couldn't block the road in some way. I, I believe that was mine. Um, it was over in Matunik, I believe, uh, on Potter's Pond. I forget the exact. But it, it, you did put that in there. The, we had met with the neighbors prior to it and had, uh, come to an agreement with them on that. Yeah, I, I'm vaguely remembering some of those things going on, so. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Uh, Ms. Kenyon, anything else to add?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, Jessica, we want to see if anyone out there has anything to say on this petition?
Sure. So, um, just as a reminder, if you're calling in by phone, star nine is raise hand, star six will mute and unmute. And if you're on your computer, just hit the raise hand function. No one has.
Um, anything else to add, Mr. Kenyon, or?
No, I just, uh, to summarize, uh, you know, the, the standard for dimensional variance is the hardship due to the unique characteristic of the, the lot or building. In this case, this is one of the more unique lots, uh, I've seen in town just due to its proximity at the end of the road. And being surrounded on three sides by either marsh or water. It's a beautiful location. Um, and I think that the applicant has done everything he can to cite the, the house. So it meets all CRMC requirements and minimizes the relief necessary from this board. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. No, it certainly seems as if, uh, uh, every possible consideration and uh, for, for all the various, uh, boards and so forth were, were made. Um, so I don't, I don't necessarily have any issue with, with, uh, the petition as proposed. Uh, how are the other board members feeling about this? Any concerns, Mr. Truckwick, any?
I think I'm okay with it. I, I mean, I think there's enough room there for staging and turnaround. Um, so I, I, and you know, if, if there's no opposition from the neighbors, I, I think I could support this.
Ms. Walsh, you feel the same way?
Yes, I definitely do. Um, and I think the construction is temporary. And I think as the attorney suggested, it's the end of the road. And I admire you for doing it, Mr. Corden.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Rosen or Mr. Daniels, anything?
Yeah, I. I would feel more comfortable with a, uh, architectural drawing. I mean, we have no testimony as to what's going to be built here or how it's going to be built. Um, there's a forty-six foot span, uh, going east to west. Uh, is that going to require girders? Is that going to require girders coming down the road? Again, it goes to the, it goes to the, uh, traffic and emergency vehicle situation. We, we just don't know. Is, is it a prefab house? Uh, we're going to have, uh, trucks come down with, uh, walls and roofs. I mean, we, we have no architectural drawings here in which to assuage the concerns that I have. Um, and I'd like to see those, but they're not here.
Okay. Um, so that, that, I mean, in that case, you, you, it would be, need to be fairly specific as to their intent.
Yeah, we also don't know the, uh, we also don't know the, the, the question about the foundation. We don't know. We don't know if it's poured. We don't know if cement trucks need to come down there. We don't know if it's prefab. We, we just don't know.
Okay. So your concern is, is, uh, just being able to handle the material as it's sort of coming in?
And, and, and safety. And if emergency vehicle has to come down the road and there's a cement truck out there and there's a girder truck out there or who knows what, uh, in the middle of the road, uh, that's one of my concerns for the community.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I, I believe the architect, uh, Laura Krikorian is out there. Um,
Well, I guess the question, Mr. Kenyon, is why don't we have an architectural drawing, which you usually tend to, uh, incorporate with most all your applications?
We had architectural drawings for the original proposal. Uh, the proposals changed somewhat. I haven't seen the, the recent ones. Um, but like I said, Laura is in the audience and possibly we could bring her up and she can be sworn in.
Okay. All right, Ms. Uh, Krikorian, could you please spell your name?
She's going to have to unmute.
Yep.
You. There we go. I'm unputed. Laura Krikorian, L A U R A K R E K O R I A N.
Ms. Krikorian, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So, Mr. Kenyon, please.
Uh, so Laura, I, you, um, I think you've been listening in. Can you answer some of the questions that, uh, the board has raised regarding the architecture in the building?
Yes. Um, the foundation will be a poured foundation. This house is in an A-zone flood zone. Um, so it is allowed to have a concrete foundation wall that will be, um, equipped with flood vents to allow floodwaters to flow through the structure and back ebb and flow through the structure. So there will be a poured concrete foundation wall. Um, and on top of that will be some steel and some wood framing. Um, the framing plans are not completely finished yet because we do have some permitting we're working through here. Um, but there will possibly be two, um, two rows of beams, um, running. Hold on, I need to get my Southeastern arrows right. Running front to back, if you will, with framing, um, perpendicular to those, which would be the shorter spans, only, I think about fifteen feet in between each of the, of the perpendicular span. So, um, there may be two intermediate beams that have quite a bit of length to them, but, um, I don't see cement trucks and steel beam trucks showing up at the same time on the job site. That would not happen. Um, so, and, and I really feel like the contractors in this area do a really good job managing the traffic on site and managing who's going to be on site, when, when they know that it's a small street and a small neighborhood. Um, and I also do feel there is room on this lot for trucks to come down the road and, and park and turn around and get back out again.
Okay. Um, Mr. Daniels says, do you have any more questions relative to this?
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Yes, Susan.
The design approved. Wasn't there an earlier petition? Didn't you all say?
There was an earlier iteration of this, which wasn't considered because this is a new application.
So it was not, well, was, was the design similar and was it reviewed by the board? Is there a requirement for the board?
Not unless it's going outside of dimensional. We, we're not really, we're not judging design per se.
So, like you said, unless there's some other reason that would, that we'd need to see it. So.
Right.
I'm sorry for everyone. I'm new. Um, this is the first meeting I've spoken at, so I'm trying to, uh, get educated also.
No.
And I guess I can discuss it with our attorney later.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, these, these are all important considerations in terms of, uh, uh, safely getting to the site. So, um, but when, when it comes to the aesthetics, uh, it, it, it's not particularly our purview. We're not really at all. So.
Um, could I?
Thank you. I'll bring it up later.
Okay. Yes.
I just want to add it is a two-story structure. Uh, the, the design is similar to what it was before, but it's a smaller footprint. So the, um, the house is a little bit smaller. Um, we haven't finalized materials yet, but, um, I can imagine some cedar shingles. There are, uh, a lot of gables on the house. So, um, we are trying to be cognizant of keeping the scale of the house, um, to, to match the neighborhood.
Well, principally it's a wood frame house, um, with, with modest spans. It's not as if you're putting in a steel structure that needs cranes or anything that's.
No, that's correct.
Not rude. Okay. Okay. Uh, board members, any other questions for, uh, any, anyone that has testified so far? No? Okay. Um, Jessica, you said there was no one that, that we already asked if there was anyone out there, right?
We did, but let's see. No one else has raised their hand.
Um, any other board members, uh, questions relative to this or? Mr. Daniels, you, that, how do you, what are you thinking now? Did it help to understand a bit more?
I, um, I won't oppose the, um, application, but I won't motion it.
Okay. Um, how about, uh, anyone else, Mr. Truckwick, or?
I, I guess I'm the. Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll do the motion unless somebody else wants to step forward.
Nope. I just wanted to make sure no one else had any other concerns or thoughts.
Okay.
Um, relative to it.
I think we heard from Casey and Susan already.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this one.
Okay. Go ahead then, Mr. Rosen. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion on the petition of Philip Corden of, uh, ninety-five Billington Ave- Avenue for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance. Uh, two oh seven, non-conforming lots of public, uh, record building setback requirements, section two oh eight, non-conforming lots of record accessory building setback requirements, section five oh three point one accessory structures and section nine oh seven standards of relief. Several people, uh, talked in, on behalf of Mr. Corden, uh, I, uh, let's see, where's the name? Uh, Jeff Bolsh, the surveyor, uh, John Kenyon, the attorney for the applicant and Laura Krikorian, the architect, uh, came in at the end of the discussion uh, to answer some questions associated with the building and the architecture, uh, itself. Um, the following, uh, the materials were presented by the chairman, uh, before the petition was read and the chairman read the petition. So I don't have to repeat that, I, I believe. Um, I would say that, uh, this is actually a, a, a very loving lot. I, I actually visited it, uh, over a week ago. Um, I believe, um, and it's surrounded on three sides by water. Uh, it's approximately one-half acre in size, uh, about, uh, quarter to a third of the lot is actually wetlands. Uh, to the east side of the lot. Um, and there is a, at present, an OWTS on the lot, which is, my understanding is not going to be disturbed. Although I didn't hear anything about the leaching field, uh, but maybe this is an above-ground, uh, OWTS. Uh, we don't have any information on whether that's going to change or not. Uh, the footprint for the house is approximately going to be in the same place. Um, originally the footprint for the house was over the front, uh, property line, but after, uh, the owner, Mr. Corden, uh, combined the, the lot that he had with another lot, which contained, uh, a shed, a small lot and some of Billington Avenue too. Uh, the lot now is, uh, much larger than it was previously, and there's no need for the, uh, the front of the house to be, uh, uh, off the property as such. Uh, the building was built in nineteen forty-four. Uh, it's in, uh, not very good shape right at the moment. It, there's, uh, flooding that goes on, uh, into the garage and actually, uh, to the first floor. And so the, um, the house has to be demolished completely and a new, uh, foundation and, uh, that will raise the house up. So what is above the flood, flood plain, uh, will, uh, result. They're also asking for a garage to be built, um, uh, in, in the present, uh, where the, a present shed is at, at the moment. Uh, so that, uh, they can use the, uh, driveway, uh, that leads in to that area, uh, as part of the, uh, the new garage. The garage is going to be, uh, eighteen by sixteen feet. Uh, and, uh, we need to have a dimensional variance for that. And we need to have a dimensional variance for, uh, the, uh, the front property line as well as read into the petition. Um, let's see, anything else? Um, there's going to be some problems. Uh, the Billington, uh, road is a rather narrow road. There was some, uh, consternation associated with, uh, getting builders in there, getting, uh, cement trucks in there, et cetera, particularly with respect to emergency vehicles. Uh, it's something that we don't have any control of and it is not part of the petition itself, but we do have to, uh, say that, uh, it is one of our concerns, uh, with respect to this and any other property that's ever gone on there. Uh, we were told that there have been some renovations. There has been this concern in the past. And, uh, thus far, there hasn't been any, uh, accidents or, uh, problems associated with, uh, during the construction that had to be done, uh, to make it a, uh, a safer place to live as such. As a result, I'm going to have to move the, the motion for approval. Uh, and say that the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique, very unique characteristics of the subject land and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Although one has to take into account the fact there is a wetlands on the property. And they are have, they do have to take that into consideration, uh, in satisfying CRMC and, uh, in sati- satisfying their own needs for, uh, environmentally safe, uh, living area as such. Uh, the board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. Uh, it's mainly associated with the, uh, fact that the house was built in nineteen forty-four. Uh, it's rather out of date. It doesn't come up to code in any, in any regard. It was over the front property line at one point, uh, how it was built that way, uh, Only history could tell us anything about that. And so I think that the hardship that this Mr. Corden has has. Lived with for the twenty or so years that he's had the property is certainly commendable. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Because it really is a beautiful area. It should be. We have to take into consideration that it's. One of the places that has been around in South Kingston for a while and we're going to try to keep it as as. Safe and as as beautiful as it is right now. Being particularly on on the pond area. And with respect to the environment and saving the wetlands, which are very, very important. To many, many people in 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 this town. The board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. We believe they've gone to rather great lengths to try to keep the footprint. As close as they can with respect to the house, to keep the footprint of the garage. Where the shed is i- in some regard and to keep the character of Billington Avenue. More or less the way it is at present. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted. Amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, because he's going to have to go back essentially. Redo a lot of the. Permitting etcetera that he's already gone through and he's probably going to have to go through some more hoops. To get this through, so as a result, I move approval of this of this petition.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Mr. Chairman. I believe we can just consult with legal, but I believe this should have a two-year expiration because further state. Approvals are needed.
Oh, I should add that on, Amy would be, if she were here. Would castigate me. I will put the two, two-year extension. Exploration, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Have to be an amendment.
Great, great, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Chalkwick, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen.
Hi.
Mr. Chalkwick.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Ms. Walsh.
Hi.
Mr. Cagnata, I, motion passes, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
You're welcome, good night. Okay. This next one might take a little bit, so does anyone, do we want to take like a five-minute break?
Yeah, me.
Great, so we'll reconvene at about nine o'clock? Okay.
What time is it now?
It's eight fifty-four, is that right?
Yeah, nine o'clock's fine.
Okay, great, see you guys in a few minutes, thank you.
Just before we start, I do have a hand raised and I I think it's pertaining to this petition. It's one of the applicants, I just want to make sure that it's, if he needs to move over or not, so I'm going to just allow him to talk before we start.
Absolutely.
Hi, Matthew?
Yes, it's Matt Bruton from BL Companies, sorry, I couldn't use the link before, kept getting booted out, so I came in another way.
Okay, so you're here now, you're good?
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, great, so we're ready? Alright, so we're resuming the meeting. And now the last is the petition of Garrett Holmes LLC, fifty-nine Field Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Zero six seven nine zero for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a seventy-five hundred and forty-five square foot retail trade structure. The applicant was previously denied a special use permit from the zoning board of review. But it has since revised the plan to include two adjacent lots. The planning board advisory development plan review was granted on April seventeenth, April twenty-seventh. Twenty twenty-one, lot size is ninety-four thousand nine hundred and two square feet. Special use permit is required per zoning ordinance, section three zero one, schedule of use regulation table, use code fifty-five. Section nine eleven repetitive petitions. The owner of the property is South Shore Mental Health Center Inc. For premises located at South Kingston, assessors map forty dash one, lot twenty-five. And alternative living concepts, CO Gateway Healthcare. For premises located in South Kingston, assessors map forty dash one, lot one twenty-six. Both lots are zoned MU, which is most used. And for this petition, we have the application with the cover letter signed and dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The owner owner authorization, signed in data May eleventh, twenty twenty-one memorandum to zoning board, six pages. Land development plans issued for permitting title sheet AL one, two pages GN one, DM one, SP one. TT one, SD one, GD one, SU one, ED one, BC one, EC two. LL one, LL two, DN one, and to DN six. Prepared by BL Companies dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty, with revisions on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Proposed retail development lighting, one page prepared by BMF LC dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty. Retail development conceptual scheme, one page prepared by BKA Architects and dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-one. We have a traffic study of sixty-four pages prepared by BL Companies. Michael Wayne Dion PE dated May twenty nineteen, stormwater management plan, one ninety-two pages. Prepared by BL Companies, Susan Suzanne King. P dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty and revised January sixth, twenty twenty-one. Affidavit of Matthew J. Bruton, three pages, signed and notarized May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Development plan review advisory to zoning granted on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one and recorded on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Book seventeen eighty-nine and pages three forty-two through three forty-four. Two hundred-foot radius map of Butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings and notarized affidavit of mailing. And then we have a correspondence by Mr. John Dowling of Ninety-Nine South Winds Drive. Receive, receive June seventh, twenty twenty-one. And who is here tonight to hear this petition or to present this petition, I should say?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman? Point of order?
Yep. Who is that?
Tom Daniels.
Yes.
Question for legal counsel, do we need to determine whether or not? This application. Is a significant change based on the previous denial before we can hear the application?
Yes. You, it it's similar to the first one, you can hear one presentation and decide two different things. You don't have to hear one in its entirety and then make a decision, but yes, there has to be a determination that it's appropriately before the board.
Okay, does that determination need to be made now prior to testimony or what's your opinion on that?
No, as long as it's made by two separate motions.
Okay.
You can hear, I, it's just a practical issue more than a legal one, it's just so that everybody can put all the information in. It's really your preference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, who is going to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the record, Joseph Brennan from the office of Joe Shikarchi. On behalf of the applicant, we do have with us tonight Matt Bruton, the engineer from BL. We have Douglas Grunert, the architect, and we also have Ed Pimental, the expert planner. And I do believe that Matt Ucaledo, the applicant, may be available for us as well if there's any questions. The application that you have before you. As explained by the chairman, is for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance. As member Daniels did mention, because we did have a denial in two thousand and nineteen and that case is still pending. But we do have to have a substantial change in the application. We have submitted a memorandum that is extremely detailed, references multiple different case law. And ordinance sections that clearly shows why we meet the, why we believe that we meet the. Criteria for a substantial change in the application before you. We heard your previous. Issues with the application previously and reasons for denial. We believe that this application that we've put before you addresses all of those concerns. We did go to the planning department for the advisory development review. We received the approval through their department and then they forwarded their positive recommendation onto this board. So because of those aspects, I, the standards for relief. Under the special use permit that we have to meet are first that it's specifically authorized by this ordinance. And setting forth the exact subsection of the ordinance. The ordinance is found under the section three oh one, the schedule of use regulations. Table use code number fifty-five in the MU zone that designates this proposed use as a special use permit. That the special use meets all the criteria set forth in the subsection of the ordinance. And that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. In doing so, the board shall consider whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been or will be made concerning but not limiting to the following matters. That C one through eight, we do have the development advisory plan review. Positive recommendation from the planning board, which is very good evidence that the town believes we fall within that comprehensive plan. And we also have our expert planner who will speak to that, but because in the interest of time. There's no need for me to get into the specifics of the application when we have the experts who can do that and explain. How we can ease the board's mind based on the previous application, so with that being said, I'll hand it over to Matt Bruton. To be able to get into those details, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Bruton, could you please spell, spell your name, please?
Absolutely, Matthew Bruton, it's B R U T O N. I'm an engineer from BL Companies headquartered in Meriden, Connecticut.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, so please go ahead.
I, the ability to share the screen, I think would help the the discussion, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, I'll give a quick recap of the application, the land development plans. Just jogged the memory of the commission members who may or may not have been on the board during the denial a few years ago. So just a quick recap, this is a property on Kingston Road, Kingston Road is roughly where my hand is kind of going diagonally across the screen. The the subject property is eighteen sixty. The subject property is 1860 Kingston Road. The original application had one parcel that was going to be used for the proposed development. Off that denial, the applicant has got under contract to purchase an adjacent parcel to expand the area of the proposed development and it's roughly circled in here where my hand is hovering right now. Overall, the two combined lots are a hair over two acres. They're both currently vacant and as you can see from this aerial, they're overgrown with just Russian trees. In general, the topography from the road is around 116 feet and then it slowly slopes to the rear around 108. And there is a wetland that does straddle that rear property line that was delineated by a wetland biologist. Butters, if you're all familiar with the area, include Kingston Auto Sales and Service to the north and a residential neighborhood kind of to the rear here as well. And as mentioned by the chairman, both properties are in the mixed-use development zone in the Kingston Road Special Management District. And I'm going to just jump over to the plans real quick. So this is the survey plan just for orientation. Kingston Road is at the bottom of the plan and I've just circled roughly here in blue the two properties that are combined for this, for this application. And if I zoom into the rear here, you can see there is a little bit of a wetland finger that that kind of jumps back and forth, this property and the residential properties to the rear with the upland review line. I'm going to just click forward a little bit to show you the site plan. So what we're proposing here is a 7,500 single-story retail building with a single access drive to Kingston Road, which again Kingston Road is going up and down the page to the right here. We have received approval from Rhode Island DOT for a physical alteration permit. As you remember or may not, as part of the denial for the original application, the trucks that were proposed to services facility WB67s, 18-wheelers around once a week, I did have to cross over the center line of the road to exit from the property. I'll show you a plan there shortly. With the additional purchase of the adjacent property, we were going to spread out this development to make that truck turn movement safer, to not cross over the center line of the road. I want to point out a few things up here. So the use is allowed by special permit, as the attorney said. We are not asking for any other relief from any other dimensional requirements. So I'm going to point out a few features, a single access driveway here. We do show parking on either side of the drive aisle coming up. The main entrance and handicap spaces are roughly where my hand is circled here. As you kind of turn around and come around to the rear of the building, there are some additional parking spaces, dumpster enclosure, and then this cul-de-sac turnaround area for vehicles to safely turn around. A big part of the discussion with the last commission when the application was denied was the access and pavement and pedestrian safety of vehicles coming to load and unload during business hours. As you can see here, we do have a large loading area and concrete pad. And the loading area is tucked behind the building from a visibility standpoint and very close to the building. The truck then has the ability to turn around on the property and leave without any crossing over any proposed parking spaces. The parking spaces that we do have shown are nine feet wide by 18 feet long and the drive aisle varies from 24 feet up to 35 feet. If some of you can remember, the previous application had parking spaces that were much smaller. Again, with the addition or the additional land being brought forward for this application, we were able to acquire more room to provide a kind of a more conventional layout that not only meets your standards as it did before, but also kind of conventional space size. So in general, I'd like to point out a few more things as well. We do still show the sidewalk extension between our north of Butter Kingston Road down to the existing driveway for the butter. We also, as part of the recommendations from the planning board, we do show a driveway connection, or sorry, a sidewalk connection from the sidewalk to the main entrance of the building. Along with that, we do show a bike rack and a bench along this area, which is adjacent to the front entrance. So in addition to the layout you see here as well, we do obviously have stormwater management system that complies with the 2002 Rhode Island Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control and 2015 Rhode Island Stormwater Manual. The goal of this system obviously is to maintain drainage patterns, water quality treatment and peak flow attenuation. So we are reducing peak flows and volume post-developments. And we have received approval from Rhode Island DEM in regards to this system and you know, the favorable opinion, given the fact that we are working adjacent to a wetlands. There is no direct wetland impacts from the record. In addition to stormwater management, utilities are all available, either in the street or in the right of way. So that includes electric telephone, water and sanitary. Erosion control has been accounted for in the plans. So that includes things like construction entrance, sill fence, erosion control blankets and soil stockpile areas. Those are obviously proposed to be in place while the site would be under construction and would remain in place until the site is stabilized. And the goal of these items, obviously to protect Butters, the wetlands and any town systems from any erosive activities while the site is not stable. In addition to that, we do have a landscaping plan that does have a variety of trees and shrubs along property. I'm going to just skip to that plan real quick. There is a heavy input from the planning board about the species, locations and placement of all of this. So as you can see, we do have a heavy line of plantings along the front edge of the road and along the entrance. We also do along as well against the Butters to the north. We also have provided landscape islands interior to the parking and also a foundation plantings along the building on the front, the side and the rear. We have also provided some screening for the loading area that would not be blocked by the building. So not only we meet, I think we've had a pretty good comprehensive plan there to make the site attractive and beautiful as a business along this strip. We do have a photometric plan as part of the application. It is LED dark sky compliant, full cutoff and obviously just enough for safety and security of the future business, its employees and its future customers. Just want to jump back real quick to show you a couple of things that have significantly changed from the first application. One of those was the truck turn. As I mentioned before, the original truck turn crossed over the center line of the road to exit the property after it was done with its deliveries. As you can see, there's just enough room for a truck to safely turn on the property and also exit and stay on its side of the center line of the road. As I mentioned before, the Rhode Island DOT did provide an approval for their physical alteration permit for this driveway. A couple of other items, just want to quickly run through that were incorporated as part of the planning board recommendation. We did actually have these parking spaces a little bit larger. We had them at 20 feet long, but the planning board wanted us to reduce them down to 18 to avoid excess impervious area. We did provide the foundation landscaping as part of the, as part of the planning board recommendation. We also reduced some of the width of the sidewalks and added the bike rack, the bench and the connection to the public sidewalk. Something else I mentioned in this truck turnaround area, we have created an island, which I'm just roughly highlighting in yellow here. That was a request from the planning board to again reduce impervious. And the planning board also had heavy recommendations for the landscaping, mostly in the placement and some of the species that they preferred to be harmonious with the neighborhood. In general, that kind of wraps up the civil plans. Doug Gruner is the architect on the project. Planning board did provide a lot of feedback to change that design. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have at this time, but I'm also not going anywhere if you want to listen to the architect before you ask questions.
Great. Thank you very much. That certainly is demonstrates some of the differences. Do we want to go into, actually, what members do you want to ask questions of Mr. Bruton to start? Just while it's fresh? Or do you want to keep going? Okay. So, Mr. Brennan, do you have a, who's next to sort of present their part of the presentation?
I believe the architect will present his part next.
Okay. Mr. Grunert?
Yes.
So could you please spell your name?
G.R.U.N.E.R.T. and with BKA Architects headquartered in Brockton, Massachusetts for the architect record for the project.
Right. And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So please go ahead, sir.
Can you allow me screen sharing?
You should be able to.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so these are the elevations. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hearing the application tonight. As Mr. Bruton alluded to, we did have heavy coordination with the planning staff to develop the redesign for the building. Some of the comments before was the building architecture just didn't meet the character of the area. So we hope what we're presenting tonight does. So I'm going to start with the first elevation here that's, that fronts the parking lot area. The materiality of the building is different textures from smooth, as you're seeing here with this band, to a little bit more dense with this shingles type of siding and as well as the traditional clapboard. The facade is broken up with a series of vertical as well as horizontal elements. And the color pattern we selected is basically the classic white, New England white with a dark gray trim and roof shingles and whatnot. The material is going to be a James Hardy smooth textured trim board as well as a James Hardy clapboard as well as a James Hardy shingle. This side of the elevation is actually the front doors and it's actually the focal point of the building. The doors are sliding type of design with a dark bronze finish. The glazing has been broken up by additional wooden bars to actually give it a little bit of reducing the scale of the doors essentially. Along the side, we have a series of fenestration that's opaque, like gray spandrel. Just because the use is retail, there's going to be full height walls inside because of the product there. The facade very varies with proportion. You have elements that bump out about 18 inches. So as you're seeing here with this element capped with a smaller scale gable that you've also seen in the front as well too. Yeah, like I said, we have varying degrees of articulation breaking up the facade through vertical and horizontal. Going on to the second elevation here, it's basically the same proportion as this side here, except minus the entry element. The roof has decorative dormers to actually help break up the roof line a little bit. And the same window treatment as you're seeing on first elevation continues there. The window elements are actually capped with a rectangular canopy with the diagonal struts to kind of give it more of a modern. This is the side number three is the side that faces Kingston Road. And it's essentially a longer version of the front elevation here with varying degrees of gable element. We're actually scaled down the gable element here on the signage band to actually give it a little definition. This side has a transparent glazing because it's actually looking into the vestibule. This is really this window and this window, the only clear glazing on the building. The rest, as I said before, is the opaque spandrel. And again, we break up the facade through horizontal as well as vertical elements as well as projecting elements, giving them our articulations of the sun. The, as you can see here in this elevation, the front entry element actually gives a little bit more depth because it actually overhangs this element right here. You can see that. So the building is essentially, it's a flat roofed building with a the shingled gable elements basically as parapets essentially. So it's hollowed out inside. So you can actually see in this elevation what the roof would actually look like. So the direction from the planning board was they actually wanted full screening on the building. So we attempted to do that as best as possible with the roof line. We did need to actually expose a little bit of our, a part of a little bit of the roof just to do maintenance access from the rooftop equipment required by codes. So actually I did a little break there. Parapet the sign. But pretty much 95% of the roof fully screened, all rooftop equipment, so visibility will be nice. This is the side that Mr. Bruton alluded to where we're going to have the receiving pad. And it's basically the same color scheme. It's a little less variety and materiality, mostly just horizontal hardy boards as well as the banding that continues throughout the rest of the building. As I said, the roof is flat, so it's basically a great EPDM membrane to drain the water from high along the rear of this elevation to the low where this section, this line is shown here, which is actually a continuous gutter. And that is basically how the entire roof is going to be drained. The rest of the roof is going to be drained through series of cars, vertical downsides placed strategically along the building, which will either be piped into the storm drain system or discharge splash blocks into landscaping. And that is pretty much all I have. And I welcome any questions you may have.
So when it comes to drainage, stormwater control, is there anything on site for that? You mentioned that the drainage just kind of runs on the ground. But I would assume that there are some sort of rain gardens and so forth.
I believe there is underwater storm system. Is that correct now?
Mr. Chairman, Matt Bruton, again for the record, yeah, so there is a stormwater management system that complies with the, you know, state regulations. What we're proposing for this property is actually a detention basin that's adjacent to the wetland area. So it has sediment floor bays and swales that direct water from the parking lot and the building towards the back where it treats, infiltrates what it can and controls peak runoff before discharging back to the wetlands. Obviously, the goal is to keep drainage patterns the same. So majority of the site goes to the wetland now. We want to keep the wetland wet. So we don't, you know, you know, dry out a natural resource. So yes, there is a stormwater management system that is obviously that large report that was a part of the application. So yes, there is a stormwater management system on site.
And the intention is to drain the roof into that stormwater system, whether or not be a hard light connection or other.
Correct. Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions for Mr. Grunert?
Yeah, Bill Rosen here. The loading area off the back of the building. Is that just going to be a flat bed? Or is it going to be elevated?
Are you talking about the receiving pad for the product off the truck?
Yes.
It's going to be a flat, it's going to be flat with grain where there's no loading dock proposed.
So there's no loading dock back there?
Correct, correct.
So they're just going to take stuff off and wheel it in through the door, I guess?
Typically, they just, they take the stock on the grade and then there's a small ramp about six inches in height to bring it into the building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Susan Walsh. Have you included lighting? The exterior lighting in the parking lot and signage?
You're showing the signage on building illustratively. The lighting is going to be, as per the photometric plan that Mr. Bruton alluded to before, it's showing illustratively on the building, but it will match that photo.
Yes, Ms. Walsh, there is a photometric plan as part of the land development plans. As I mentioned before, there's a couple of poles in the parking lot and there's a couple of wall packs associated with the building. It's all LED dark sky compliance with no trespass over the property lines. It would just stay on during the operation of the store during, you know, business hours and, you know, you know, less, less after hours. you know, less, less after hours, just enough to make sure this isn't a hotspot for, for, for crime or anything like that. But yes, it shouldn't be a nuisance to any, any butters or providing any glare. And all the fixtures that we do propose, you know, can be, can be retrofitted after the fact if there is some problem with shield to make sure that everyone is, everyone is happy.
Big signs in the road or?
Ms. Walsh, we've been told that we're only allowed to have one, one sign, either, either building or monument. So at this time, the tenant has chosen to stick with building signage, which Doug has shown on the elevations.
Into the actual building.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, and in terms of the turnaround, the back access in terms of deliveries and such, the intent is that customers aren't necessarily going to need the back for parking. This is pretty much just part of its operations is backside of the building and the turnaround. So there won't be any customers necessarily bogging up the backside of the building.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the rear, the rear of the property would be basically employees and deliveries. The, the intention to ha- is to have the customers parking in the front by the main entrance, which is the side of the building and the majority of the parking and handicap spaces are there. So there should be no conflict between customers and trucks in the rear area there. There's no reason for them to go back there. There's no public entrance back there for them.
So and those six spaces that are on the west elevation are for employees?
That would, yeah, they're, you know, they're obviously open to anybody, but the goal would be for employees, those would be prioritized for employees.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, any other questions for any testimony so far?
Ah, yeah, Bill Rosen here with respect to that last point. You're going to be bringing 18 wheelers in there once a week? Is, is that what I heard?
Yes, Mr. Rosen, again, Matt Bruton. Yeah, it's typically a one 18 wheeler per week. And there's potentially up to, you know, one to two box trucks per week as well for, for perishable items like milk and bread and things of that nature. But yeah, one 18 wheeler per week. And that is the truck turning movement that we show, which is basically the worst, the worst case scenario.
And so the 18 wheeler can, will be able to turn around in that turnaround area?
Absolutely. It's, it's sized exactly to be able to accommodate, accommodate that size vehicle. And, and no more, no less, obviously. Prior boards in the state had concerns with increasing of impervious area just to, you know, just to accommodate one weekly truck. So we did it exactly to, to the specifications of that vehicle, especially adjacent to that wetland.
And the, the once a week for the 18 wheeler, is there a specific day that that's going to come in there?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. I know it's probably a coordinated effort from a logistics from, you know, you know, transportation company. I, I don't know at this time when exactly that would fall, but it would fall during business hours as employees would, would need to let, you know, the store would need to be open to receive stuff, but it's typically done off peak, not during peak times of, of customer traffic.
Yeah, that was my concern. Is, is it off peak hours on a Sunday or something like that, whereas, or Saturday or whatever?
Right. Obviously, the store doesn't want to have any, any conflicts between their, their customers and delivery. So as, as they, they flush out the operations of the store, they, they adjust as necessary. But it's a benefit to everybody to have them separated as much as they possibly could.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions so far? Okay, Mr. Brennan, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final expert that we have is Edward Pimentel, our expert planner.
Mr. Pimentel.
Yes, sir.
Spell your name.
That's Edward Pimentel, P as in Paul, I M E N T E L.
Pimentel, can you please swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board for this opportunity. As you've heard extensively already from the design team, the project engineer and the architect, this really was a collaborative effort to not only meet the concerns and the standards of planning staff and the planning board and to address the concerns of the prior proposal that it got denied. But what we took to real, to heart was that not only do you have, you've had an existing comprehensive plan since 2014, but you have one that's coming around the corner that had some very specific design guidelines, the village design guidelines. So we took the, the two comprehensive plans and we took the zoning regulations. And we use those as not, I would say, just simply a boilerplate, but really as the primary tools, as we went through the iterations and designs of the building, the site, and then of course, more importantly, and as equally importantly, from a planner's perspective, the site amenities. Minimizing this property so it doesn't look like commercial in character, but would fit in within this neighborhood. I did a comprehensive analysis of the surrounding neighborhood. A lot of the surrounding land uses, as this board well knows, predate any zoning regulations. You know, the gas station, other, this is not to, I'm not condemning those uses, but it was prior design guidelines as we know them. You know, unopened crib cut openings, signage that's over maximized, et cetera, et cetera. That wasn't our intent. Our intent was to really establish kind of the precedence of what this community is looking for along Kingstown Road and some of your other commercial corridors in regards to that village flavor of design. So it was not to take on the appearance of a commercial character, but to really blend in given the, given that the, the surrounding residential flavor too, where this is a mixed use neighborhood. So what we did was we, we did to our best, as Ben testified already, to minimize the amount of coverage to the barest minimum, minimizing standard stalls, aisle widths, but yet keeping it safe to engineering standards. The turning, the turning, it was long extensive discussion with the planning board on the turning radius and the materials used there. Vegetation, buffering, landscaping to the neighborhoods to the rear, et cetera, et cetera. The look of the building, the signage, we went without any menu board, without any monument sign or even a freestanding sign as we could have done. We could have offset. Once again, it would have detracted from the site. It would have imposed more of a commercial character. It would have detracted from the built design concept of your comprehensive plan. So that really was the intent of what, as we went through this process and iterations, and this is the product we have now. I, my report is in, is in the record and I excerpted, I excerpted every single village design concept that was in both comprehensive plans and the zoning regs, checking them off as almost as a met it, met it, this is what we want to do, this is how we need to meet this. And it was really a great guiding tool. The attorney has already stated how we meet the standards for the granting of the special use permit. He went through the first and the second. The third one really is a, it's a conglomeration of different requirements met by the different experts, which deals with the ingress, the off street, trash collection, collection, et cetera, et cetera signage. And then it comes down to consistency with character of neighborhood. And as I've indicated, this is what we were trying to accomplish here. We're going in a different direction here. We're bringing the village concept to Kingstown Road. And then finally, consistency with the comprehensive plan. I used your new, albeit still a draft, I used it as my guiding document as I was reviewing this and constantly checking off, do we meet it? Do we meet it? We made it. And so in, in my professional opinion, I think we are consistent with a comprehensive plan. I think we do meet the standards for the granting of the special use permit. And it's my professional opinion, I think the board can approve this in, in consideration of the previous one that got denied. I think we've made substantial modifications, substantial. Now, if the board has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Board, board members, any questions? Okay. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our presentation. If the board has any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer. But as the experts have testified, we meet the standards for a special use permit under section 907, number two, under the South Kingstown zoning ordinance. And our application also, as I stated earlier, meets the definition needed for a substantial change in order to bring it back before this board with all the changes that we've made. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Well, hang on. We're going to open it up to, to questions or comments from the audience. But first, there was one letter received, and this was received on June 7th, 2021 by Mr. Dowling of 99 South Winds Drive in Wakefield. He states, my name is John Dowling and I live at 99 South Winds Drive, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 82879. Writing response to the zoning hearing concerning Garrett LLC on June 16th, 2021. After some research, I found out that this application is for a Dollar General on Lot 125 and 126, which is extremely close to the police station in Kernis Quarter Light. We already have a problem getting out onto Kingston Road. What will happen with the new retail business across the street? My concern is traffic on 108. The road is heavily traveled both in summer and winter. There are two new houses being built on 2156 Kingstown Road plus two new apartment buildings at the Tower Hill Landing and are already 152 apartments at this location. Plus, there are many other businesses on this road, including Brookdale Senior Leaving, Living, Tri-County Community Action, Dunkin' Donuts, Mobile Gas, North Rips, Towing and Repair, Kingston Autos, South Kingstown Safety Complex, Meadowbrooks Apartments, Pump House, Extreme Airsoft, or Sort, he says, and a new soon to open Liberty Liquors. How much traffic can this road absorb? I would like to see this application denied. And again, that's Mr. Dowling. Is Mr. Dowling here by chance, Jessica?
He is.
If he wants to, this can stand on its own, or if he wanted to add or ask any questions of the petition, he's more than welcome to.
He has raised his hand.
Excellent.
All right, Mr. Dowling, you just need to unmute yourself.
So when you're ready, Mr. Dowling, you can state your name, please, and spell it. No? It's not working out? Okay.
Josh, you're, you.
I realize, thank you. Mr. Dowling, you can call in by phone if you'd like. Let me get you the number. You can call in at 1-929-205-6099. And we'll keep a lookout for you. In the meantime, while we're waiting to see if Mr. Dowling can get connected, there is a Monica Hanson in the audience.
Good.
And she just needs to unmute herself. Nope.
I think I've been successful.
Yes, you are. You're there. So could you please state your name?
Sure, it's Monica, M O N I C A, Hanson, H A N S O N. And I echo many of Mr. Dowling's concerns. I'm very concerned about the traffic in the area. And again, it's very hard to get in and out of South Winds Drive now and to add more traffic with a potential, you know, of a driveway almost across the street, I think would be very hazardous.
Okay. Well, let's ask Mr. Pimentel. Do you have any sort of historic references to, as to how this road is being traveled? Is it getting more intense?
Mr. Chairman, I would refer that question to the project engineer.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Matt Bruton, again for the record. So as part of the, the application, we did provide a traffic impact study to study the addition of this retail facility to the existing neighborhood. It's quite long, quite scientific. So I'll just, I'll recap it in general. The findings of this, and this was done prior to COVID, so the, the, the traffic levels obviously today are much less than it was when the study was originally done because of the pandemic. But the traffic study included counts on the existing roadway network. We did, we did apply the build scenario after the store would be built and, and a build scenario in the future. With all those factors accounted for, the summary of our, of our traffic engineer was that the roadway network is adequate to and to the, you know, include the, the minor increase in traffic that would be associated with the store. Just to give you kind of a, a quick numbers, the peak demand for the store is typically weekday, four to 6:00 PM, which is typically associated with the after work rush as people are heading home and, and stopping to, to purchase items. Or Saturday, like a midday peak somewhere around 11:00 to 1:00 PM when they're doing their kind of afternoon chores. In those scenarios, weekday, they could expect 37 trips, which is approximately 19 cars. A car leaving and a car, a car arriving and leaving is considered a trip. So that's why 37 is cut in half. On Saturday would be around 51. So again, 26 cars a, a, and Saturday afternoon. So that, those trip numbers generated with the existing volumes on the road could, could handle that additional, additional trips. Traffic engineers do evaluate roadways by something called level of service, which is a time delay that is associated with, with making movements. They grade it from A to F, just like school. F obviously being failure, A being the best. All but, all but one movement stayed exactly the same. Most of them were in a level of service B and C. There was one reduction in level of service from B to C, but that was one movement and it was only an increase in, in delay of three seconds. So the recommendation of the traffic study is that this roadway is adequate to, you know, accept this new traffic. And we, as I mentioned before, we did receive approval from Rhode Island DOT for the physical alteration permit. They've reviewed this traffic study as well.
So.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Daniels, go ahead.
Appreciate that you brought up the traffic study. I would much prefer the author of the study to be here because I have a number of questions.
I second that.
The validity of the, of the study. The study was done in 2019, as I understand it, in May. Do we know what date in May?
Mr. Daniels, we typically do traffic counts over a couple of days to, to get traffic volumes mid, midweek on a weekday and also on a weekend. So it was probably several days. We put it as a month, just as a general, generality.
So your testimony is you do not know the date. Is that correct?
Correct. I don't know the exact day in May.
Okay, so then we do not know whether or not traffic from URI is figured into the observations made in this report because if it were after, let's say, May 15, traffic would be reduced. If it was prior to May 15, when URI is typically in full session, then the numbers may or may not be, most likely would increase. But you can't testify to that because you didn't do the study.
I don't know the exact dates at this time, so I can't answer your question fully now.
Okay. You also, the study also estimates increases to the year 2020. We're now in 2021. Can you testify that why the study was not updated to 2021?
Yes, Mr. Daniels, as we were going through this reapplication process, obviously it was in the midst of COVID and redoing traffic studies at this time, obviously are not showing accurate results because of the reduction in parking associated with everybody either working from home or loss of jobs. So the, in general, the the analysis showing, you know, a growth rate to 2020 is accurate, but it's delayed because of the pandemic has set traffic levels back a year or two. So we did not update at this time because we couldn't get more accurate data.
Okay, so based on what you know, the new apartment complex slightly north of the subject property, which one of the objectors just identified with 150 units, I believe, I think that's what, what she said was not included in that traffic study.
I don't believe so at this time, no.
Okay. Further, I'm reading. Further, I'm reading from the conclusions and recommendations. And you did testify, reading from the same study, that the project is conservatively projected to generate thirty seven new vehi- new vehicle trips during peak hours. And fifty one. I believe that's during weekend hours, as I read it, thirty seven and fifty one. So that's total, that's total, total trips during the four to six hour peak period, thirty seven, is that what, is that how the report reads?
So the thirty seven you're referring to is the is the weekday peak, and the weekday peak is is generally between four P M. And six P M., so it's a two-hour window, typically after rush hour.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, I spent an hour today at a Dollar Tree store nearby. And I observed the entrances into that store. And in one hour, I documented seventy one entrances, seventy one. Individuals. If it were a couple or with three, I counted that as one entry since they arrived in one vehicle. That particular location is located in a mall. Every one of those people that enter, it can, can safely, it can safely be assumed that they got there in a vehicle. Because there's no apartments or residential in that particular area. That's one hour. Seventy one in one hour. Generating seventy one trips in and seventy one trips out. So I would maintain that the conclusions and recommendations here aren't even close. And I wish you had a I wish you had the engineer here to defend it. You made a great presentation with everything else, but you left out one of the key elements. And that is traffic on North King, on Kingston Road. With this increase, e- even if you cut this in half, with the increase on North King, on Kingston Road is just completely detrimental to that particular area and is cannot be in keeping with the comprehensive community plan or our ordinance.
So, Mr. Daniels, I appreciate your your comments. I don't know exactly the family dollar you were referring to. Obviously, Dollar General and Family Dollar, although they share a similar name, you know, are 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 different businesses, Dollar General actually is not a dollar store. So they do attract a different clientele. And given, I don't know where that family dollar you observed was, there's obviously different traffic patterns associated with different neighborhoods. I can say our traffic study did take into account roadway volumes on the adjacent streets around the store. And when we do build for future scenarios, we refer to the I T E manual, it's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which studies thousands of stores across the area, Rhode Island, Connecticut, across the country, to generate the volumes that are typical for a use of the size, so seventy one, I believe you, seems quite dramatic. I can tell you, having developed and worked with this applicant on dozens of of these stores in other locations. I I've never seen that level of of traffic generated in one hour from that, but I'm, you know, I understand your concern.
I also believe that report indicated that there was no direct correlation between this particular business and the I T E report. I believe it's a stab in the dark or an estimate on the peak hour traffic. It's nothing that's counted. What I just showed you is actual numbers that I counted myself. So without direct testimony here from a traffic engineer, I tend to agree with the objectors with regard to traffic.
Understood, Mr. Daniels. I can have the the traffic engineer be. Go ahead.
The location.
Understood. Obviously, Mr. Daniels, we can't count traffic to a Dollar General, if a Dollar General wasn't built at this time, so you you understand why we have to rely on I T.
Sorry, I can't hear him.
Can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you, but.
Okay. Mr. Daniels, I apologize if you can't hear me. We obviously can't count traffic to a Dollar General if it's not built yet. That's why we rely on I T E models for for the future use. But I'm happy to have the traffic engineer come back at the next meeting to to give additional testimony to some of your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Bruton.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Charwick, please.
I just, I just want to, I want to make sure the record reflects that. You know, I I totally agree with Mr. Daniel's concerns on the traffic and it doesn't appear to me that Mr. Bruton's a qualified expert to speak to the traffic study, so you know, until we have an expert that can, that can speak to this, I don't know that we can, we can weigh in on this one. I mean, I I personally can't.
Understood. So well, I mean, I feel like that we can, I mean, we can continue it at this time, knowing that there's more information that we do need that that isn't available to us. Unless there's anyone else that that we needed to hear from now that it can only be available in this meeting, meeting, and then we can sort of continue it to the next. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I may quickly just ask, so that we can have our traffic engineer be prepared. Can Mr. Daniels just let us know which store he got those counts from so that they can accurately compare?
Sure, there's only one in the area. It's in the Salt Pond Mall in Narragansett.
Thank you.
It's called, same thing, yeah.
And then we have, we have no problem with the continuance to the next month's hearing. I would just ask if the board does have anything, any other questions for the experts that are here, that way it's just fresh in our minds that they ask, but I'm sure if they are, they'll be available at the next meeting as well if something pops up in the next month.
Yeah, that's why I want to make sure that we have sort of everything out, as well as anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on on this petition. To just help you sort of get the right people in for the next continuation. Jessica, is there anyone else? Or actually, I don't want to cut off Ms. Hanson yet. Ms. Hanson, is there anything else that you wanted to add? Or ask? At this moment, certainly, it seems like we might continue it, so you can come back the next.
I I think for the moment, my my comments are complete.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Dowling can speak yet. He's not showing that he's muted.
Okay. Mr. Dowling, are you there? So your hand went up.
Yep. All right, I I think unmute yourself, Mr. Dowling. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned about the traffic on that road. About two months ago, I was hit by, I was rear-ended by somebody on that road during a heavy traffic period, with the guy was not paying attention to what he did, and he hit me. And the traffic was heavy. And at times, getting out of South Winds Drive can be a chore. And I'm just worried about traffic coming out of that that complex, that that retail space, turning onto one oh eight. It's going to be a mess. Right now, we have a lot of traffic coming down and going into the Dunkin' Donuts and the gas station. And they back up while people are making turns. So add another store to that mix. And I don't believe that, you know, I've seen Dollar Generals, I've seen people like that, and they're in, people are in there all the time. They're not just in there from four to four to six after work. There are people in those stores at nine o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning. All kinds of times. And the road is busy. The road is busy. We have URI students. And in the summertime, we have people using it as a shortcut to the beaches.
Right.
So the road is always traveled heavily. So that's my concern. I I moved here for tranquility and peace and 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 to be happy, and if this road gets any any busier, it's going to be a mess. And you've got, now you're talking about eighteen wheelers pulling in there once a week, you don't know when. You don't know what time, and box trucks coming in. So add that to the mix. I'm I'm very concerned about traffic. That's that's where I'm coming from. And I I thank you for listening to me, and I thank you for you know, reading my my letter.
I'm just. Thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Jessica.
I know we have Richard Maynard present.
Yes. Mr. Maynard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Richard Menard. R I C H A R D, M E N A R D.
Great.
M E N A R D.
Yep. And what what is it like, you'd like to?
So I am a board member here at South Winds Condominiums, and I speak on behalf of the board and the residents that I have spoken to regarding this application. We are in opposition of granting this permit. We have concerns, many of them have been mentioned already, but we have concerns of the negative impact of on our property values with with the approval of a low end retail store. We also don't know. We don't agree with, you know, placing a retail space that above some neighborhood where we already have retail space in Wakefield and Narragansett of these types of stores. To bring them into our neighborhood would be a detriment to those who have been invested in our area and this town, so in, I'm not going to beat the traffic issue. I think that's been covered and and done, you know, very well, and I also agree, I added my notes to bring up the the traffic study as well, because that was done in May when that was my question, when was it done? Because of the URI students, but I do look forward to the next meeting and hearing more about what is planned, but we are in opposition of this permit.
Okay, well, you understand that this is a permitted use for this area. It's not a que- it's not a question of them asking for something that isn't allowed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Do you have any questions for anyone in particular? That's that's.
No, will we be notified of the next meeting?
Yeah. No, you won't be notified, but the next meeting. When is that, Jessica? It's the is the twenty first?
Yes.
So July twenty first, it's twenty first at seven o'clock, they will be as far as we know right now, they'll be the first petition as a continuation. So.
We haven't made that decision, Mr. Chairman.
We have not, but that that you're right. Okay, Jessica, is there anyone else out there?
No one else has raised their hand.
Mr. Brennan, is there anything else you wanted to present at this time?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay, board members. What would, what's some thoughts that folks are having?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Um. You know, back to the traffic study again. It it seems to me that May could potentially be the lowest. You know, one of one of the lower volumes of traffic during the year, given that if if the study did take place, you know, towards the end of the month, after the URI students have left and before the beach weather has really set in, I think that's that's probably not a great time to do a traffic study in this area. So if it's possible to get an updated study at at a time of year where the traffic is more you know, where the volumes are more consistent with the the average for the year, I think that would be helpful for me.
So you would favor a continuation pending?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and and to have an updated traffic study, perhaps?
Yeah, and and that was one of the things that stood out to me is just why, how do they determine that type type of year? Because that, that, living in the area especially, it's you know, that that's part of my commute, and that's definitely a slow time of year.
Mr. Rosen, you've been. Quiet?
Quiet. The only thing, I I heard one thing, and that is that the dollar store is different than Dollar Tree. Which intrigues me. I'd like to know more of why Dollar, the Dollar Dollar General, or whatever it's called. I've been in Dollar Tree at the Salt Pond Mall. There are times when there's only two or three people in there. There are times when there are more. My grandson takes me there all the time, because he likes to spend his dollars. And so I'd like to know more about this store and what are the traffic implications, really? It it really, you know, May maybe, May, early May can be representative of what's going on here in South Kingston, as far as the winter traffic is concerned. The people who are proposing this say that the winter, it doesn't matter, winter or summer. Their clientele is associated with a certain type of clientele, which may not be associated with URI or summer traffic or whatever, it may just be associated with local individuals. So I'd like to know more about that. And I would vote for some sort of continuance, yes. Not necessarily to July, if it takes more than that to get a traffic study done now that the economy is more or less open and the summer season is going on. It might be advantageous to wait for another two or three months.
Okay, we can certainly ask them.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a very quick point based on Mr. Chalkerwitz, Chalkerwitz's comment. I think if there is another study done, the police, our public safety is right across the street, as you all probably know. And you may want to include some kind of non-statistical observation on the traffic from the police department. That's all.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Bruton?
Just to Mrs. Walsh's point, we did contact the police for crate crash data during the the offering of the study, so that is included. But I'll have the traffic engineer come back to speak to that more directly, to hear any of your other concerns. In regard to Mr. Rosen's, my only point in differentiating Dollar Tree and Dollar General is that although Dollar is in the name, it's actually not a dollar store. If you look at any weekly flyers or visited any of their other locations, you know, they sell everything from milk to bread to mops to diapers, and it's, they're not a dollar. I'll I'll admit this, and you can see on other records for other stores that I've presented at. It's a bad name. It gives it gives off the impression of a dollar store, and it's not actually a dollar store. Their prices vary depending on item, but it is basically a local, local convenience store, similar to you know, like a like a mini Target or 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 mini Walmart in terms of offerings. But the prices are not a dollar, which is more in line with a family dollar or Dollar Tree establishment. So that was the only differentiation I wanted to point out.
And and what's the typical duration of a of a customer inside the store?
Mr. Chairman, that's a great question. I I do not know that, but I'm happy to to track that down, see, maybe to testify to that next time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Daniels?
If the question were called, I would deny.
Okay.
However, it would seem that consensus is to continue. And that's okay with me. I think the applicant certainly, with a sixty-four page traffic summary, not presenting someone tonight to defend or testify to that report, takes this board's time. Because we now need to go ahead. Maybe we need another traffic study, depends on what the applicants want to do. But I just. I just, uh, I, I think this was tried to ram through. Uh, and, uh, it's not going to work. So I would agree that they've made substantial changes because if we find differently, the court is only going to send it back anyways. It's on appeal from the first, uh, decision. The court's going to send it back and say, why didn't you consider the substantial changes and ask us to consider them? So that's going to delay the process. So I would find that, uh, there's a sub- substantial change here. But my concerns, uh, have not been met and not been, um, professionally testified to or answered. So um, I would certainly would agree to a, uh, uh, continuation, but if the question were called tonight, I would oppose. And I think I have, uh, good cause and good reason and substantial facts, uh, to oppose. So that's where I stand.
Okay.
Chairman, can I ask a question of counsel?
Yeah, of course.
Um, i- i- is there a way we can bifurcate this and, 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 um, you know, make a ruling on the, on the doctrine of administrative finality and whether, you know, substantial change has been met? And then, and then that way, if we do continue it, then we can focus on, you know, the traffic issues and the other issues that remain.
Yes, if there's a consensus among the board that you've heard enough to make a determination as to whether or not there have been substantial changes, you can make that determination and continue the application to another date on the, the substantive issue. Yeah, it, it's, you could do it both ways. You can continue the whole matter or you can divide it. It's going to have to be voted on separately either way.
Okay.
Uh, if I may.
Yes, sir.
It certainly requires a new traffic study, could we not?
Is that for me?
Yeah, that's, that's new.
Yes, you, you can request it. It, it's if they choose not to present it, that's, you know, it's their petition. But you can certainly request that at the next date there be an updated traffic study. If it's, if it's not something that they're able to provide, then they're not able to provide it.
All right. So then in that case, I'll defer to my colleague, Mr. Chalkerwick, to see how he feels about that.
Uh, I, I'd feel much more comfortable having the opportunity to review an, an updated traffic study. Um, so I, I, I would also agree with, um, uh, Mr. Rosen, that I, I don't think July would be sufficient to get one done.
Mr. Bruton?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we're, we're happy to update and revise the traffic study based on the concerns we've heard tonight. Um, again, there's not, it's not a time where we can recount traffic, uh, given the, the current state of the world, uh, but, uh, you know, we would like to potentially hold that date in July, be able to revise and get something back to you for review. Um, you know, update, we commit to, to updating the report to your concern. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there before indecision was made.
Okay, well, um, we can certainly, we can certainly do that, um, and, and determine if, if we feel it's, if the members feel it's sufficient um, after that presentation. So, uh, Mr. Chalkerwick, do you want to make a motion to say that there has been a substantial change within the application to justify it's?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Gina, do we, do we need to be, uh, is there anything specifically we need to say in this motion to, to, or just to basically say it's substantially different?
Yes, then, yeah, I, there's, there's no ma- it's not, yeah, there's no magic language. It's just that based on the evidence presented, if you want to do your, your typical summary of what you've heard and why you're basing that, as long as you have facts that you've heard tonight that lead you to the conclusion that there has been a substantial change.
Okay. And are you comfortable with that, Mr. Chalkerwick, right now? Or?
Yeah, it's just, uh, the procedure is a little odd because we're not, we're not moving to approve the special use permit. We're just so we're just making a motion to, to essentially acknowledge that a substantial change has been demonstrated.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll move the petition of Garrett Holmes LLC, a 59 Field Street, Torrenton, Connecticut. Um, the board, uh, I'll move to uh, have the record reflect that the petitioner has satisfied the obligations according to the administrative finality doctrine, that a substantial change has taken place since the last petition was presented to the board. Um, this is based on the, the architectural changes that have been submitted to the board as well as the, um, significant changes that have been made to the proposed, um, parking lot and the addition of a truck turnaround in the parking lot. And, yeah, that, 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 that'll wrap it up for that.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Chalkerwick.
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Daniel?
Hi.
Ms, Ms. Walsh?
Hi.
Mr. Pagnetta, I, uh, the motion passes. Okay. Um, so, uh, seems like that we do want to continue it until the July 21st meeting. Does anyone want to make a, a, a motion to continue?
Mr. Cagnetta, uh, prior to making the motion, we need to make sure that all members present tonight will be able to attend the meeting.
Fair, yes. Uh, is there any of the members that are here currently, um, that won't be here? Or will everyone be here?
What is the date again? July 21?
I'll be here.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Excellent. So, uh, would someone like to make a motion to continue this, uh, matter until the July 21st meeting?
I would, I would make, I would make the motion, but I would make a contingent on an updated traffic study and leave it open-ended, but that's me.
Okay.
Somebody wants to do something different, that's fine.
No, I, 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 I agree with that.
Okay.
Move to continue the petition of Garrett Holmes, uh, for a special use permit under zoning ordinance section 301, use code 55, section 911, repetitive petitions for a continuation until such time as the petitioner provides a satisfactory updated traffic study in, in, uh, a complete satisfactory traffic study. And at that time, um, the board will, uh, schedule the application to be continued. So moved.
We, well, okay, uh, so is there a second to that before we discuss it?
A second.
Okay. So wha- what do you mean? Like, we have to give them some specific metric as to what we would consider a updated? If, if, because you're, you're saying we have to receive it first and then.
No, the burden is on them to, to provide it. If we leave it open-ended, the burden is on them to provide us a study.
Okay.
When it's provided, then we can schedule a hearing. If we find that it's, if it's just a rehash of what was done in May of nineteen, May, uh, uh, of, uh, 2019, then in my mind, that's, uh, that's not updated. That's just a rehash. But if it's an updated study, which may take two or three months, or they may want to do it in September when URI traffic is back. So we have a more substantial study than we schedule it. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, um, but I, okay, so Gina, would, would we need to, um, determine a, a specific date? Or, or give some sort of concrete?
Definition.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I don't think the date is as important as the parameters. For example, uh, Mr. Daniels, do you want them to have live testimony to support any updated?
Yes.
For example, so that I would make that one of the contingencies. Um, and then if any of the particular components raised concerns, then you can identify for them the, the components that you would like to have updated. Um, I heard the engineer say there was one component that was not able to be updated in any, right? So, so I think that the parameters of what's satisfactory are more important than the timeframe.
Okay, Mr. Senz, I'll ask you to craft that then for me.
Okay, so I would say the live testimony is important, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it would be an updated traffic study, uh, supported by live testimony of somebody with firsthand knowledge of the the contents of the report. Um, to the engineer, a question, which was the one that you said was not able to be updated? Which was?
Gina, the traffic counts at this time are, um, inaccurate because of the ongoing COVID pandemic situation. So um, what we would do to get accurate counts prior to the pandemic, as no one can accurately the, reflect whether those numbers will ever recover and at, or at what time that they would cover. Uh, we'd have to talk to an island DOT about an acceptable, um, historical data to use to update the traffic to, to um, address the board's concerns.
Okay, so Mr. Daniels, would that be satisfactory in terms of what you're requesting? That's, I think that's the, the sticky part right there is that.
Right. I, I'm hearing that the, uh, study relies on, uh, DOT information, not on uh, personal observation or traffic engineer or expert observation. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, so Mr. Daniels, what I'm referring to is typically we would go out and count traffic in person. Uh, but if we, if we were going to count now or September or maybe the mid-school year or even, you know, mid-July, your, your peach, you know, your peak each season. Anytime we would count in 2021, I'm telling you, is going to make this a facility look awesome because no one's really driving that much because of the pandemic. So to give you an accurate representation, I would want to go backwards, uh, to look at pre-pandemic numbers. And that's what, that's what DOTs across the country have been having to do to get you a more accurate representation and analysis of projected volumes. Anything that's done now is not accurate. So you have to go backwards. But it would be reviewed and discussed with the, uh, traffic engineers at DOT and analyzed by traffic engineers for a stamped professional engineer's opinion report that would be submitted to you guys for review.
So your position is that that no one's, no one's traveling now? That the roads are empty? I mean.
No, you know, my position, my position is that the numbers are dramatically down from the past couple of years because of COVID, because of people working from home, people, uh, learning remotely, people dropping out of college to delay for a semester, people canceling beach vacations. I'm not saying that there's nobody on the road. I'm just saying it's not an accurate representation of your neighborhood because of an ongoing pandemic. And, um, that's been the, uh, advice for DOTs, uh, in your state and, and across the country is anything right now is, is, is an anomaly and not, and not a historical representation of what is, what goes on in this neighborhood.
Well, certainly one of my, uh, utmost concerns, and I, I, I think it's shared by my colleague, Mr. Chalkerwick, is the increase in traffic from URI. So May, June, July doesn't reflect that. Late August, September would certainly reflect that. And I think that's an important factor, uh, because Kingstown Road takes a, uh, large amount of traffic back and forth from, uh, the student base at URI.
Agreed.
Uh, I, I would say, I mean, is there a way that you can pull historical DOT data during months and, you know, during which students are in session?
Absolutely, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Which, yeah, that's what we would do is, is go back and look at the worst month that would fall during, um, uh, school enrollment to make sure that, uh, we're taking, you know, the, the, the worst nine months of your year when, when traffic is consistent and use that as a basis, um, uh, for, for a revised study.
That would, that would work for me.
Okay. Is that, does that define it enough for everyone? That, that, we know the expectations for next meeting?
Yeah, I think an, an updated traffic study based on historical DOT data during any, you know, a month in which you're lies in session and, and have an expert prepared to testify to the, you know, the substance, the, uh, study.
Okay. So that, that is your motion amended?
That is my motion.
Okay, excellent. Um, so, uh, without any further discussion, um, did we get a, uh, yes, we did get a second by Mr. Chalkerwick. Uh, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Chalkerwick?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Ms. Walsh? Mr. Cagnetta, I, uh, the motion is continued until the, uh, July 21st.
Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you.
You, thank you.
You very much.
Welcome. Okay, um, we just have a couple more things. Uh, uh, one is the minutes from May 19th, 2021.
I'll, I'll move approval of the minutes of May 19th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chalkerwick. All, all in favor?
I, I.
Um, and, uh, the attendance we just took. Um, and then Jessica, the, the, the election of officers?
Election of officers every, uh, June, it is time. So someone will need to nominate someone and vote on it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, is, is it possible we could hold that off for one month in that one of our, uh, permanent members is not present tonight? And I think he deserves, um, consideration, uh, and a vote because he's a regular member.
Is that okay? Jess or, or Gina, is that all right if we hold off or do we need to?
I am not sure on that.
I, I have to admit, I'm not sure either. Is there a set term, um, or does it expire until the next? Um, until the next election?
Well, let's take a look in the ordinance.
Yeah.
I think, you know, in fairness to Mr. Jurzak, he should be.
Yeah.
Especially if he wants to be king again, you know?
I don't think he does, but no. Uh, let's see if I can find it here. Zoning Board of View, section 906, let's see. Section 906. I believe it's, uh, 906G. Is it once a year during the month of June, the board shall organize by electing its membership, the chairman or chairwoman and vice chairman or chairwoman. Um, the board may engage the services of a clerk and stenographer within the limits of the funds available. Um, it does say the month of June. Well, would it be appropriate to move that ahead one month? I mean, I guess, I guess I'm asking counsel on that.
It says June.
During the month of June.
Can we use our alternate?
Well, of course. I mean, i- i- but it's just a matter of, uh, no, no, I mean, our alternate meeting for, like, could we have a special session next week?
On the 23rd.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think you could do, I think that, that would probably be a better solution if that's something that you have an open date already and.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to have another meeting, but I, I do agree with Mr. Daniels. I mean, I, I think it's only fair to Mr. Jurza.
Well, Mr. Zir- Zirzak, will he be back?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna.
Yeah, that, that would be my only concern is if we move it and he can't. But then I guess we would just vote who, you know, the five members who are present.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a better option and I will double check with Amy. She may say it's fine to move it to July. Um, I'm just not that familiar with the procedure of how that, that works. It's usually, there's usually something that says what happens if you don't vote in the other member. So i- if you want to use that other June date and then I'll double check with Amy and see if she has another approach.
I, I do want to say in the past, I believe we didn't do the June meeting, that we had to do a July meeting for it. Um, I can look at minutes from the past couple of years quickly and see if there was any.
I feel like we, we didn't do it in June all the time, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's been a long years.
I think, I think you're right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So do we want to just say we can meet next week?
Let me, do, do you want to hold on one second? I can see if I can ask Amy right now if she, I don't know if she's available to answer me, but I can check with her.
Sure, I don't, you know.
Or I don't know.
That she would be available.
Yeah, I think, um, we'd already, hadn't we planned the con-
Yeah, I think we'd already had we planned the continuation for the 23rd if necessary. Was didn't you send that out, Jess?
Yeah, but that's typically for if we don't get to all the agenda items as far as petitions.
At least hearing them.
This is.
I'm just thinking maybe. Yeah, maybe you could just let us know. If Mr. Jurzak is and I I've got to learn pronounce his name. If he's available, and it shouldn't take too long, right?
No. All of five minutes.
Half an hour?
Not even.
Yeah.
Yeah. And is there any provision for doing it by mail?
Okay, I just I have an answer. So she says, yes, you can do it in July.
Okay.
That makes it easy.
Great, all right, well, we'll send her flowers to thank her. Okay, so. We'll 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 hold off until next month for that.
We have to make a motion to continue that or?
I don't think so.
I don't think you have to do it by motion, no.
But at least everyone will have a month to really fight for their new position.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Or bow out, either one. Now, okay, so anything else, Jess? I think that was it, right?
If everyone doesn't mind. What is the process consistent? Would you just nominate? New new officers or?
Pretty much, just just throw out names.
Oh, they told me the alternate goes right to become the chairman the next month. And if that's not going to happen.
Be careful.
Like Rob says, we're going to be fighting.
There's. We're lucky it's not in person. So. All right, excellent, so. There's nothing else. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
All right. Yeah, excellent. Nice job tonight. Thank you all. All in favor?
Good night.
Bye.
Good night. Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure. Bye bye.